All right, good evening and welcome to our meeting. We're gonna have the invocation by Senior Pastor/Teacher Devon Ward of Victorious Life Bible Church in Hampton be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would, please stand with me. And Pastor, as you come, and I'm gonna ask everybody here, we lost another community leader. The Councilman, Mr. McDuffie from Lake City passed away earlier this week, so please keep him and his family and his family in prayer, please.
Amen. Pastor. Every head bowed and every eye closed, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we, the citizens of Clayton County, come before you now first to tell you thank you. We thank you, oh God, because as we look around, we can see that you have been good to us. You brought us through transition and change. You've covered us through ups and downs. You've given us peace in wrecks. You've kept us in Riverdale. You've watched over us in Jonesboro. You protected us in Lovejoy. You've given us mercy in College Park. You shielded us in Forest Park. You guided us in Lake City. We recognize, oh God, that it wasn't because of anything so great that we have done, but because of your grace and your mercy that we can come together today. You teach us in your word that we are to pray for those who are in government and leadership. So we pray now for our Board of Commissioners. We pray that you would keep their minds. We pray that they would be strong, vigilant, wise, and make decisions that are best for our community. We pray blessings upon their families. We pray that they would be the light that is needed in dark places. We ask a special prayer for the family of the gentleman that we lost in Lake City. Finally, oh God, as we prepare to move forward in this meeting, we pray that this community will be united as we discuss the business and the needs of our community. God, get the glory out of all that is said and done, and may your presence be evident throughout these proceedings. God, please touch every department and forever bless Clayton County. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Clayton County Board of Commissioners' June 18th, 2019 Business Meeting. The first order of business is adoption of the agenda. Any members of the board have any amendments or recommendations?
Yes, Madam Clerk, I would like to remove under Presentations item number two Clayton County Water Authority presentation. Do I get a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye. Opposed, issue unanimous. Also like to remove under the regular agenda item under E, Court Administration Proposed Pay Scale for Law Clerks. Is there a second?
Second.
Who made the second?
Commissioner Hamburg. Those in favor, aye. Opposed, issue unanimous. And also just wanna state for the record.
What's item twenty-four?
Item twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
Under the synopsis, I think it reads, child, women and children, it should be, it should read only adults and not children, just point of reference. Any other changes?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamburg.
Under the regular agenda, I would like to take F, Separate, Resolution 2019-71.
Yes, that's, I was gonna ask for, I was gonna ask all those to be taken.
Okay.
Separate anyway. It's on the regular agenda.
Okay. I would also like to take item eight separate, as well as...
You want to take it off, put it on the regular agenda?
Yes, sir, on the regular agenda, as well as item nineteen.
Okay, the motion is to take item eight and item nineteen off the, cause send agenda place on a regular agenda, is this agenda, is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, issue unanimous. Any other changes? All right, here and done, I'll accept the motion to approve.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, issue unanimous.
Next item is a presentation, MARTA Quarterly Briefing Presentation by Virgil Flood.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Virgil Flood, and I am... I'm Assistant General Manager for External Affairs at MARTA. Joining me this evening is one of the appointees from Clayton County on the Board of Directors, Mr. Jerry Griffin, as well as Ms. Jennifer Hibbert, who's with our Long Term Planning So this evening, in a few minutes, we're gonna cover just three areas: State of Service, Capital Expansion, and a few systems updates. So State of Services, we're gonna move through this really quickly. So as we mentioned the last time we were here, MARTA's in the process of installing 1,000 bus stop amenities over the next five years. To kick off that effort, we will install five new shelters in Clayton County starting next month. You see the list on the board. Thank you. Simply put, we heard you and we're responding. On top of that, we're gonna install 30 additional bus stop shelters in the first year of this five-year project. The net impact is that 38% of the riders will be boarding at stops with amenities. That's a 21% increase over the current conditions. Just recently, MARTA's reached an agreement with Creative Outdoor Advertising of America to install up to 300 bus benches in Clayton County over the next 12 to 18 months. As we mentioned previously, we'll share the ad revenue with Clayton County and with the cities where these benches are located. Our focus is really less on the ad revenue and more on the service and comfort that we want to provide the riders for MARTA buses. IGAs have already been approved for Clayton County for College Park, Forest Park, Jonesboro, Lake City, and Riverdale. And the benches will begin to be installed later this year. Our capital expansion, as you already, as we've already spoken about, you're familiar with the two major expansion projects that we've got planned for the county: Bus Rapid Transit and Commuted Rail Transit. So we're in the process of developing standards for BRT, and basically these standards will define what really constitutes BRT: Dedicated Lane Usage, Signalization, Frequency of Service. Different transit agencies across the country use different standards. We wanna have something that's consistent throughout all the jurisdictions that will eventually use BRT with MARTA. So BRT offers some of the same features and functionality as rail by providing a predictable level of service at stops. It's faster, more frequent service, and enhanced reliability. The capital cost of implementing the service is generally lower than light rail or heavy rail, and BRT systems can be, can offer full-service stations with reliable passenger information as well as fair machines, comfortable seating, and waiting areas. So this is where we are now, and this timeline is preliminary based on the average timeframes for similar projects across the country. And of course, this is subject to change due to unforeseen project circumstances. So in the next iteration of what we plan to do, we will keep you updated on all the environmental studies that are going on. So that was from the Los Angeles trip that was, that people went on, I believe it was in February. So the, this shows the alignment, this shows the alignment approved by the MARTA Board in December for the commuter rail. It consists of a 22-mile corridor starting at the East Point MARTA Station and going over to Lovejoy. It's very likely this project is gonna be built in phases, either two or three phases. We're particularly interested in this because we know this area is economically significant in Clayton County, because it connects several major activity centers, mostly along State Route 54. There's also the population and economic development growth that's expected in this corridor. We see this area being very attractive for future development that can be transit-oriented and can become a catalyst for additional investment. Our number-one task right now is to engage discussions with Norfolk Southern, and as we continue to view the, review the two- or three-phase options, this gives us an opportunity to expand strategically while building additional funding through sales tax revenue and looking for other financing opportunities. It also keeps costs down and allows the public to see this project progress while we're looking to build ridership. And more importantly, it allows the opportunity for transit-oriented development to begin. So a major consideration for commuter rail is double-tracking versus single-tracking. This ride-away requirement will be far less if we are using single-tracking. Single-tracking can be a little bit less expensive, but requires even less of the opportunity to purchase ride-away. Single-tracking is basically where we have one track and the train moves north and south on that same track. Double-tracking, one train goes north, the other one goes south. Transit-oriented development is really a catalyst for what, a major consideration for commuter rail. We can leverage private sector investment. The most important thing to know about this concept called value capture is that as property values increase with the new rail system, the government is able to capitalize on this added value by creating, by using either a TAD or other tax incentive structures to leverage the increased value in the property as the transit program begins. As you may well know, the Belt Line in Atlanta is a TAD. We will continue to seek federal funding, but as you have, we've been advised, it's a competitive process, and this project will have to compete with other projects across the country for federal funds. So here's where we are with the commuter rail project. We're just about to begin the NEPA process, which is the environmental study. We'll continue to analyze the project alignment, which basically shows us where exactly on the, connected to the Norfolk Southern line where we're gonna wind up. We've begun to initiate the environmental process, which is critical for federal funding, and we will continue the conceptual design of this project. We'll continue to have public engagement as we move through the progress to make sure, through this process, to make sure that the public is able to not only hear from us, but give us their insight on what they think works well for the, for the community. One thing that I know that you're very interested in hearing about, of course, is the multipurpose maintenance facility. As we've said to you before, we started with 15 sites, and using a number of evaluation criteria, have reduced this now to three sites for the maintenance facility. We looked at the physical location, zoning, availability of property, and so forth, access to transit. So the three sites that remain now are the two on Conley Road, Conley Road North and South, and what is the old Kmart Distribution Center further south. So we're now taking a closer look at the, these three sites to really analyze traffic, geotechnical issues, stakeholder support, acquisition costs, and site development to come up with a final selection. We're sort of in the site design process, which essentially is the layout for what the building's gonna look like, where bus parking, employee parking might be, where stormwater detention might be located, where the police precinct might be located, and so on. This gives us an opportunity to determine the best operational efficiency for that site. Our plan is to select a site this summer with the board approval and start the environmental analysis in the fall. Couple of other items I wanna bring to your attention. Last Thursday, the Board adopted a fiscal year '20 budget. It's about a $1.1 billion budget with $513 million in operating expense and $579 million in capital. Some important notes about that: This is our eighth year in a row with a balanced budget. We retain a healthy reserve of $203 million plus, and there will not be a fare increase in the 2020 budget year. We think that's very important, that we've kept fares the same while maintaining a high level of service. Couple of things to point out: In our capital budget, we're gonna spend about $40 million on rail car procurement. We're getting new rail cars, and over the course of the next 10 years, we're gonna replace all of our cars. We're gonna spend $25 million on new buses, and ultimately, we'll replace all of our buses. And we're gonna spend $16 million this year on rehabbing our rail stations. We've done well, by the way, with our recruiting effort, and since January 1st, we've hired 230 full-time and part-time bus operators. You know that was a problem for us earlier in the year. Hiring is not quite where we wanted to be, but it's much better than it was back then. Of those 230, by the way, 40 operators and 26 additional employees, so 66 employees have been hired that live in Clayton County since January the 1st. As an aside, there are 4,461 employees at MARTA, 583 of them live in Clayton County. Another thing we're really proud of is, last Thursday, we kicked off something called Pop-Up Shops, essentially to make it easier for customers to access our products. And next Thursday, we're gonna bring MARTA closer to Clayton County by offering that pop-up at the county headquarters library. So at that location, people can purchase breeze cards, they can apply for reduced fare cards for people over 65, and they can begin, or begin the process for MARTA Mobility Service. We'll offer this program once a month for the next six months to the end of the year, and then evaluate how we're gonna move forward with continuing this, this process. We certainly believe that bringing MARTA closer to the communities we serve is good customer service, and we wanna continue to do that. But just so you're aware, we also plan, I mentioned some of the station enhancements, but we also plan in the early part of 2020 to make some significant changes to parts of our rail system as a part of maintenance. So you'll hear more about that in the Fall Briefing, and so that's, that's gonna be important. And then finally, I wanna bring to your attention, the MARTA Board will vote likely next month on the 15th Amendment to the Rapid Transit Contract and Assistance Agreement. The 50th Amendment covers four key things: Allowing us to extend the penny sales tax through 2057. This is really important, because it gives us the bonding opportunity to do things that we know are important to this county and others. Recognition of Atlanta's Half-Penny Referendum, which passed in 2016, and expansion of the current engineering report to allow us to do projects in Clayton County, City of Atlanta, DeKalb County, and in Fulton County. And then one other thing that's, that's been added, it gives priority to the jurisdictions to allow you to have a voice in any of the proposals that we get for transit-oriented development. It's a fast clicker. All right. So that completes my presentation for this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Yes, anybody have any questions for Mr. Flood?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamburg.
Okay. I know you mentioned the maintenance facility...
Yes, ma'am.
...for buses.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Are we gonna have the facility for the trains also?
Well, our hope is that the, it will be a multipurpose facility that will allow us to accommodate future expansion. Right now, it's for buses, but the hope is that the site that we select will allow us the flexibility to expand, to offer more services.
Okay. Okay. Well, this is a question, but it's, have you spoken with our CEO regarding the bus stop on Highway 85 in Riverdale, directly in front of the Senior Services Director's office?
I have not spoken to him directly about that. He did send me a message that said this was an, an item that may come up for question.
Right.
So my understanding is that the bus stop was moved, the one that's in front of the, I'm not sure, it wasn't clear on what the issue was.
Well, it's almost in the doorway of that office space, and as a matter of fact, they, anyway, they want it moved either up or back, and I would too, 'cause I parked there one day, and it's...
Well, I'll be certainly happy to take a closer look at that and answer this.
Please check, yeah, please check in. It may have been, if it was changed, it was only changed last week, I wasn't around, but the week before then, I know it was at that same location.
Okay, I'll definitely look at that.
Please take a serious look at that.
On Highway 85 near the senior center?
Highway 85 in Riverdale next to the...
Senior Center, okay.
Krispy Kreme donut.
Know exactly where that is.
The light is on.
You have any other questions?
Yes, I just want him to go back. I don't wanna prolong this, 'cause it's, we have a long meeting already this evening. But I do wanna make sure I heard you correctly. You're gonna put in five new shelters, is that what you said?
Well, we're gonna actually put in 35, so we're gonna start with five initially, yes.
Okay. My only statement is the same that I made to your CEO, and I make really good notes I hear all the time, "start, going to." In fact, one of your slides has a wide gap in terms of a time span of when things are completed, and we've had this conversation. So a lot of your presentation, I'm just gonna say it, it seems like I'm seeing the same presentation over and over again. I need to see some timestamp dates, because at the end of the day, we're responsible to the citizens who voted for MARTA to be here, and I can't take back to them and say, where they're going to, they're getting ready to, and they're working on it, and they are hoping. This is what we've heard over and over again. We need some timestamp dates, and then the next time, we need to be able to put a check mark by "completed," 'cause these five bus shelters, you talked about those when you came to visit us, and that was several weeks ago. This is low-hanging fruit. It don't take that much. And so when you sell us a dream about BRT and then signal, you know, we know what BRT takes. We know it takes a dedicated lane. We know what it looks like. The video looks wonderful. But when you're not showing me that you can get five shelters completed, and we only getting 30 out of how many we got in Clayton County? Tell me how many stops we got? Six hun, tell me again.
You have 628 stops.
I can't get excited about 30 additional, 35 additional shelters. We need more. We need more.
Yeah. Ms. Davis?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Pertaining to the 15th Amendment. If that 15th Amendment is not passed, then what happens to Clayton County?
Why'd you ask that?
That's a great question. One thing is that we will not be able to bond past 2047, which is the current limitation. So we'll, it will greatly diminish our bonding capacity, which means that we will not be able to finance longer-term projects. We've not, I can't sit here and tell you exactly what all the implications of that are, but it's not a positive thing. It's, it's important for us to be able to extend the capacity to bond, because we've got projects that will require more money than we have cash to finance.
The reason I ask is because, looking at the timelines, are the projects financed or available to be financed with all these constructions starting in 2024, 2025? And I think one of them starts in 2930. Are those already available to be financed?
You've essentially set aside about $100 million for, from the penny that you've collected over the last four years. Obviously, that's not enough to fund the entirety of the project. We have some bonding, we actually just bonded $130 million on Friday, on Thursday, I'm sorry. So we do have some money. I don't have the financials to tell you which project, which projects, and how long they will be financed through, but it is our position and our belief that in order for us to continue to provide the level of service that you and others expect, that we're gonna need to have some additional bonding flexibility.
Yeah, and because I'm looking at it as well, because if we have that, and we have something as simplicity, as simplicity as the bus stops, we've only, saying we're covering about 8% of all the bus stops we have in the county. And honestly, I'm driving up and down 1941, driving down 138, especially with this rain, and you see folks walking in dirt, sitting on, sitting on the ground. We, I would really hope we would aggressively put together a plan that is going to aggressively try to take care of these issues.
I wanna just concur with you, and not, again, not prolong it, but because it's important, what I'd like to see, and I'm gonna make a recommendation to Chairman, that we see your presentation again next time before you come back, because these meetings are important to us, and I'm just gonna be quite honest with you, nowhere else is anybody able to come and give the same presentation over and over again, bring us financials to the board meeting, show the public, show us, as you just stated, $100 million. You bonded another $130 million. Then you need to show us that. You need to show us what the total cost of this project is gonna cost, and then phase it out so that we can see it. Because what happens is, we get questions about this whole new project that just got pushed through from MARTA in Atlanta, but just as the question was asked to you, your bonding capacity was not where it needed to be before the citizens voted to have MARTA come to Clayton County. So I think that we need to take a second look at where we are and what you're presenting to us, because you know what's more important than time is energy, and we need to see some energy spent on the people of Clayton County.
Any other questions or statements? Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. The Board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time limit to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please state your name and county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparatory remarks or use abusive language when addressing the Board.
Hello, I'm Tom Fadulik. I think I spoke to you a couple times, and I spoke to Commissioner Warner a few times. I'm here to discuss the zoning for my farm over by Fortson Wildwood Road. You know, it was rezoned in 2010. It was rezoned, I looked at all that land on the corner of Woolsey Road, left-hand side, now Wildwood Road, that was three miles of property on that side, we rezoned in one single meeting in 2018, that was done in one month in December. Three miles of zoning without going through the zoning board. And my farm, which is over 30 acres, so I've been living in it for 43 years, it's been built in 1967, it was part of that that we rezoned as RS110. I found out on by accident when I was looking at the rezoning on the corner of Fortson Wildwood Road at March 31st, and when I called up the zoning commissioner, I said, "Oh yeah, your farm was rezoned also." So how did my farm get rezoned? That's what I asked the last time. I'm in a farm covetant, I've been in there for 43 years, I sign up every 10 years, I still signed up until 2023, so, and I've been told, "We're working on it, we're working on it." Said, "Yeah, we're working on it." Commissioner Turner in MARTA says, "Yeah, we're working on it." Well, it's been three, four months now, and all I get, "We're working on it." So I'm here to get some kind of progress. Where do we, where do I stand in the progress? 'Cause usually, I'm real easygoing, I'm just kinda figuring it works, I know governments work slow, I work with the governments, and you know, things don't happen over... work slow, I work with the governments, and you know, things don't happen overnight, and I realize that, I need some progress, what's happening, you know, what's happening with my farm. I'm not worried about all the other zoning right now, I'm just worried about my little home place, am I gonna get rezoned back to agriculture instead of RS-110? So, what kind of progress are we making on that? I mean, how would I go?
Look at me, Chair. Okay, let me say this. I agree with you, you heard me make that statement about energy, I spent a lot of time and energy on working on, number one, why did the issue happen? Why did it come up? And I've yet to receive an acceptable answer. I have also documented emails, conversations, phone calls with everyone in community development. I do not have the capacity to hold those folks accountable in my own right alone, I have presented to this board of what my suggestions are, and I've asked for timestamp dates. So, I honestly apologize to you, but I don't like doing anything without any dates addressed or attached to them, and with community development, if it was up to me, there would be some changes.
Still, what's gonna happen?
Yes, I said it.
To answer your question, sir, it's, you said the word "process," it has to undergo a process. Unfortunately, it slipped through the cracks a couple of times, still, we are working to make sure that your property gets the proper zoning, we gotta make sure we do it the right way this time, so, just still, continue to hold us accountable, but we are working on that, and again, there's a process, advertising and some other things that have to go into it, for us to make sure that we get it right this time. So, I apologize for the delay, but we're gonna get you where you need me.
For the record, sir, I don't mean to be rude, but Ms. Spain, can you give us a date when you're going to advertise this land and get it right? Because he's right, it took a month to get it wrong, and it's taken us a long time to get it right.
Right. I don't have the dates in front of me, but they are rapidly approaching August, it looks like it's a workable schedule, we were working on-
Specifically for what, Madam? What's the workable schedule? Is it going to be published? Is it going to come before this board? Please give specifics.
We would be able to publish and advertise in July, it would make the zoning advisory group meeting the first week in August, then it would come to the Board of Commissioners in their meeting in August.
Okay, that's on record.
Does it have to be advertised, I want to rezone it back to agriculture again? I mean, like, I wonder-
Yes, it has to be advertised.
Yes, yes, sir, we would go back through the proceedings of putting the notice in the paper, and that would be the legal requirement by the county to do their own initiation.
Okay, because it wasn't advertised when you did it. I mean, I didn't even know, I didn't even know about it for three months, I mean, so there was no advertising, so I just want to make sure, since my zoning was tore up, I want to make sure my farm covetant, that's good to two thousand and three, that some county official didn't dare that up too. I said, "Well, we don't know about that either."
I'm still trying to understand what's going on over there myself, sir.
Well, this time, it's a lone application, the, when we dealt with it in December, it was a huge packet, so it might have got lost in the shuffle, but this time, it's gonna be an isolated advertisement, so you'll be able to clearly recognize what's going on.
Dr. Henry Anderson.
And continuing to talk about and discuss crime, criminal activity, unlawful actions and behaviors and conduct in unincorporated Clayton County, which is under jurisdiction, oversight, and control of our Clayton County Police Department, I will now start with and present the crime statistical information empirical data numbers on the fourth major crime category, which is larceny. Larceny is defined as a nonviolent theft involving the wrongful taking and carrying away of another person's property or personal goods from his or her own possession, and without his or her own consent, permission, or legal right, with the intentions of stealing it and not intending to return it, and converting an item stolen to the taker's own use. Larceny is the legal term for stealing. Last year, two thousand and eighteen, in unincorporated Clayton County, which is under the jurisdiction, oversight, and control of our Clayton County Police Department, there were five thousand sixty-four reported cases of larcenies or stealing compared to five thousand two hundred and ten reported cases in two thousand and seventeen, and five thousand eighty-one reported cases in two thousand and sixteen, the crime analysis to date. Last year, two thousand and eighteen, the number of reported cases of larcenies or stealing in unincorporated Clayton County decreased by one hundred and forty-six when compared to two thousand and seventeen, which was a two-point-eight percent decrease, but still occurred at a daily average rate of thirteen-point-eight of fourteen reported crimes and criminal cases of larcenies or stealing in unincorporated Clayton County each and every day last year in two thousand and eighteen. The commentary, even though our great Clayton County Police Department, which is under the authority, leadership, guidance, and command of our exemplary, excellent, and top-performing Chief of Police Kevin Roberts, is to be highly commended, praised, and celebrated on achieving a two-point-eight percent reduction in our larceny or stealing crime rate in two thousand and eighteen, the facts on this matter is that the larceny or stealing crime rate in unincorporated Clayton County still remains very, very high and out of control when compared to other counties with the same or similar citizen population numbers, and it all speaks to and reflects on the massive number of people and a teenage and young adult offspring who relocate and move to Clayton County, and who bring with them their criminal intent intentions and commit crimes of larceny or stealing against the law-abiding. Decent, hard-working, respectful, honest, principled, honorable, upstanding, well-mannered, well-disciplined, and well-behaving taxpayer citizens of Clayton County who bring value, worth, class-esteem, and professionalism to Clayton County, and who only want to live in a county where the crime rate is low and where crime and criminal activities, actions, events, occurrences, and incidences are at a minimal. I will continue to give the crime statistical information empirical data and numbers on all of the eight major crime categories for unincorporated Clayton County at the next Clayton County Board of Commissioners' regular business meeting.
Mickey Garber.
Mr. Chairman, I respectfully yield the floor to the next speaker.
Thank you, sir. Woody Smith.
Woody Smith, Hampton, Georgia. My comments or questions tonight are basically on our transparency from you people on what's happening behind the scenes. You talk about this gentleman over here that's falling between the cracks, something's allowed to happen, there's nobody held responsible. The same thing is true when we had Black Hawk builders ten, twelve years ago, different people on the commission, different people in different high offices let things get through and shouldn't have, and we got some of that same stuff, I believe, going on right now, at least that's what I hear from my associates behind me. We trust in you, we put you where you are with our elected vote, we expect you to back it up a little bit, to stop this madness somehow. You talk about putting it in a paper that has a circulation of what, twelve hundred people? Are you gonna put signs up for this one?
Talk to the board, sir.
Are they gonna put signs up for this? We didn't hear her say that earlier.
That's been, that's been the practice.
I know, but she didn't say it, and it didn't happen last time.
I'm telling you, sir, we're gonna put them up.
Alright, my other thing is, I know we have an ethics committee somewhere?
Yes, sir.
Does this get involved in any of this at all?
They do, as complaints come in, there's a formal way of filing complaint.
Okay, and my last, my last item, we talked after the last meeting, has there been any progress on the impact fees?
No.
To builders and stuff?
No, not yet, we've been dealing with the budget, but that, again, like I told you then, that was an excellent point, something we have to, we need to pursue.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Timothy Von Dell Jefferson.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, Timothy Von Dell Jefferson, unelected citizen of District Three. And I want to, my whole summary tonight is about a compliance officer. If we had a compliance officer, we wouldn't be in the quagmire that we are in at this particular juncture. In light of recent events throughout the region, especially in our community, I'm going to talk about the elephant in the room, corruption. In a sense of transparency with full disclosure, this is not a political statement, enlightening me following Declaration of Attention to Run for District Three Commission of Clayton County in two thousand and twenty. Being a victim of corruption from all four police agencies after spending forty thousand dollars to be cleared and the attack on my family as a potential candidate for District Three Commissioner, I am determined to get rid of public corruption in our county, moving this county forward in the spirit of excellence. After this court decision last week-
Sir, are you making a campaign statement?
No, this is not a campaign, I did a disclosure, I did a disclosure. After the court decision last week to re-estate former Commissioner Emerson back on the Clayton County Development or the Investment Board, it appears the county taxpayers is being exposed again to potential lawsuits because of the actions of Commissioner Warner. Being a sitting commissioner of District Three, a licensed real estate agent, a potential conflict of interest. In the real estate world, there's a term called steering, or a lameness term called manipulation. Being a licensed real estate agent inviting Metro Stud to do a presentation, and the commissioners directing involvement in the zoning administrations and the zoning issues without proper guidance exposes the taxpayers in the county to potential lawsuits. Your involvement with each department throughout the county and county employees ignoring the proper protocols of going through the COO has a tendency to intimidate county employees and their fear of retaliation. Therefore, we, the taxpayer, highly recommend within the two thousand and nineteen proposed budget, there be a compliance officer to keep us all in line outside of the staff attorneys to protect the twenty-six hundred-plus county employees and the stakeholders and the taxpayer citizens of this county. Thank you so much, have a great day.
Pat Hussey.
I know I'm supposed to give you my card, but can I turn it in later?
If you're here, are you speaking on a specific zoning issue that we're gonna bring up later on? So, do you want to speak now at public comment, or you want to speak about the zoning issue?
Well, I can wait and speak about the zoning issue if it's pertaining to the Panhandle, I mean, I'm-
Well, on your, when you signed up, you signed up under-
I just said Panhandle, question mark, question mark, because I didn't know what was coming up, if anything at all, tonight regarding the Panhandle.
Please proceed, thank you.
You would like for me to proceed?
Yes, please, please.
Okay. Pat Hussey, I live in Clayton County at one three six one three Woolsey Road, Hampton, Georgia. Chairman Turner and Board of Commissioners, I'm here tonight as a concern about what is taking place in our Panhandle community. Our crowd may be slim, as there is another meeting going on at the Calvin Center at the same time scheduled by the developers of Attorney, where a notice was received to date by only one household in the Panhandle. I urge once again to properly correct the zoning and other issues that has previously been done. Y'all, as the Board of Commissioners, has the resources to be transparent and protect the citizens. We elected you and are willing to do our part, and we do not want to hire anybody to straighten out our counties and proprieties. We would like to spend our taxpayer dollars wisely. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Carolyn Peck. Carolyn Peck. And you do have something listed under the zoning hearing that we're gonna hear, are you speaking in reference to that hearing?
Yes, I am, should I?
Yes, ma'am, I would, yes, ma'am. What about John, I believe it's Brown, is that also requested for a zoning?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what about Jenny Gwynn, Jen, Gwynn rather?
I think.
Okay. Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment.
The next items, it's the consent agenda items.
Alright, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some of them.
Sarah Second.
Second.
Any questions? Here and now, both favor I. I oppose, it's unanimous.
The next item, this is a regular agenda, we will take item number eight, which was removed from the consent agenda. Item number eight is a recommendation for award and approval of contract, PSA nineteen dash one thirty-two, consultant services for Clayton County, Georgia.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. This is recommendation for award and approval of contract, it is a PSA professional service agreement nineteen dash one thirty-two, consultant services for Clayton County, Georgia. The recommendation is to award a professional service agreement with the collaborative firm LLC located in Atlanta, Georgia, in amount of two hundred fifty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars. Funding is available through the community development of the contract services general funds. My request is for you to approve the recommendation, authorize the chairman or his designee to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract, and authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget accordingly.
Alright, is there a motion?
Some of them.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
It's very vague, can you tell us what they're gonna be doing, please?
Sure.
There's no synopsis either.
Uh, within, that's great, within your agreement package, but you're correct, it's not a synopsis.
Can you put it on the record?
Sure, there will be form and planning, two, and strategic planning, so basically, that's complete, completing zonings, compliance reviews for the new residents, completing zonings, compliance for all reviews, also, they'll be doing zoning calendar analysis and reviews as well.
I had a question, I asked some time ago, Ms. Spain, I thought, worked for us now, didn't we have that service, those services before we brought on Ms. Spain as a full-time employee?
I think the services, and I may have to have Director Jiki come up, but part of the services that we have on this contract originally was sourced out, and then we came back and we did, when we did the agreement last year, we only sourced out Ms. Spain's position for six months, and then it went to a county position.
So, how many people do we have in the department now? Because you heard all the questions, regardless of the other stuff that was kind of put out there erroneously, but can you tell us, how is this gonna benefit us? Because it's my understanding, you just heard it, I'm constantly getting hit, I've sent you emails, I've sent your department emails, and I don't know that I see things moving any quicker, so I'm not understanding how this is gonna help.
I've received only emails from you directly, Commissioner.
Okay, sir, we're gonna go back to this position, how is this gonna help us if we have a planning and zoning director, and we have a department? How many people are working in the planning and zoning department with Clayton County right now?
This, we have roughly, well, in the whole Department of CD, about thirty-five people currently in the department. This position, it's strictly for inspections. If you understand how the department is structured, we have licensed permits inspections. We've had over a number of years difficulty in filling inspection positions. We started with outsourcing the building side of the inspections division, then we got down to only two employees, and they were not keeping up with addressing all the inspections that we were getting. So, we moved to outsourcing the whole operation, the whole inspections, to outsourced the whole inspections. So, that's how we get there. By not being able to hire folks over a lengthy number of time, there is enough data to show that those positions were adequately advertised over all these years, we were not hiring folks, that's where we're going to this format. Ms. Spain is the zoning administrator and does not conduct inspections. We have about six different divisions in the department, and she's only over one of And that's the one she can do by qualification.
So, let me make sure I understand, we gave you a ten percent raise, I think, not too long ago, because we put everything under your department. So, now you're saying that not only is it difficult to manage and to hire and to manage the division and the department, but it's so difficult to the point that we've got to go out and spend another two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars to help you do the job in that department? Is that clear?
Commissioner, I never told, I never mentioned here that it's difficult to hire.
You said you had difficult, we're gonna, I understand, sir.
No, no, hiring, I never say it's difficult to manage. We can hire employees partly because inspectors are going to the private sector for a higher pay. We find most cities in any county use outsourced third-party inspections.
Okay.
I never mentioned, standing here, that the issue of the pay I was given, we can address their, Mr. Chairman, sidebar, it comes up all the time, and I still don't understand why. We can explain it, how it got happened. We can explain it, how it got happened, anytime, but I don't think this is the forum unless you give me permission to get into it.
We agree. We agree. Just, uh, you've answered a question. We're gonna move on.
And we can move on, but I'm gonna make this statement. Every day, I take calls from everybody in this audience, and I just had to sit here and listen to somebody come and say other reasons why whatever they think is not going on in your department. So, at the end of the day, whether you think it's the proper forum or not, it's the use of the taxpayers' dollars. And when you're, when it's coming before us to spend additional funding, we need to justify it. And I need to be able to see why we're justifying it. So, regardless of wearing our feelings or anything on our sleeves, we have a job to do. So, at this point, my vote is gonna be my vote. Okay?
Are there any other questions for Mr. Dickey?
Yeah, I do.
Or from Ms. Rogers?
Will, will this professional service firm help expedite or maximize the efficiency of the department?
Yes, they've already doing the, doing so on the building side that was outsourced. We have two, one plumbing inspector and one electrical inspector for the whole county. It's overhead of. So, yes, this company have been doing the building inspection, and they've been doing a good job.
Well, I make a recommendation, Chair, if that's the case. Then what we do is we amend the motion, we amend the contract for half of the amount, look at the services for the six-month period of time, reevaluate, and then look at it again in six months. If it's going to be that most beneficial to us, then I think that that's fair. And it's not personal, it's just a matter of us being accountable. That's simple as that. It's not personal. And it's okay if it doesn't get approved, but that's my recommendation.
Okay, well, there's a motion on the floor to approve. It's been seconded. Any other questions? All right, here and now, those who favor I.
Aye.
Oppose.
Nay.
Three, one, it passes. Next.
The next item is item nineteen, which is Mount Zion Boulevard and Battle Creek Road widening, environmental mitigation credits. Transportation and Development Department.
Mr. Metar.
Do you just want me to give you a general overview?
Who asked for this to be removed? To put on the regular agenda?
I did. I just wanted to know, well, we can go ahead and properly move in a second for a question. Yes, I do have a question. Um, when I looked at Battle Creek Road, and I am meeting with some folks later this week, but what was, refresh my memory, what was the purpose of this widening of the road and for us putting all the money into it? Because it was my understanding that there were some other possible plans for Battle Creek Road, which this is consistent with, but it's just a question of what, um, what makes this widening important? Because looking at the traffic study, I see traffic more congested in other areas than particularly this area. Simple as that.
So, this, for clarification purposes?
It's all.
Okay. The, the Battle Creek Road widening project, off the top of my head, has been on the county's radar for over thirty years. It was a vision twenty-twenty way back in the day. Um, it provides a four-lane widened roadway for, in the middle of the county for east-west travel. Um, it kind of connects the Valley Hill roadside, um, all the way over to eighty-five, State Route eighty-five, um, to Mount Zion Boulevard. It goes over to the interstate at I seventy-five and up to Lake Harbor Road. Um, it provides a, like I said, a four-lane facility in the middle of the county for east-west travel.
All right, thank you for that synopsis. Uh, is there a motion to approve?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions? Here and now, those who favor I.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous.
The next items are also on the regular agenda. A, B, C are all from, will all be directed by the Human Resources Director. A is the twenty-twenty health benefits.
Good evening, Clayton County citizens.
Please take each separate.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair and Commissioners. Human Resources, we have five requests this after, uh, this evening. Um, first, Human Resources respectfully requests the board's approval of the benefits mix for Plan Twenty-Twenty. Costs, communication, and options are the guiding fundamental principles of our strategic approach to benefits administration. And these, uh, these principles have also been identified by our employees as being important to them. The proposed benefit mix contains several enhancements and changes to the current benefits and offers more to our employees without an increasing cost for the most part. The proposal offers savings and enhancements throughout the package, and the cost has been included in Human Resources' Twenty-Twenty budget. However, the request to add a robust EAP, Employee Assistance Program, results in an annual cost of $45,000. If the EAP is implemented at the beginning of the planned year, which is January first, twenty-twenty, the budgetary impact will be $22,500. Over time, an EAP does pay for itself. Uh, to put the benefits, proposed benefits on record, and I did provide a package to the board, uh, the first one is comprehensive medical, point-of-service, self-funded. We are requesting the implementation of Blue Cross Blue Shield of Georgia as a carrier for the self-funded point-of-service medical coverage. This will result in a discontinuation of Aetna and will result in an initial projected savings of $750,000. The implementation of Blue Cross Blue Shield will result in very little to no disruption due to the larger network of providers. There is very minimum disruption to pharmacy. However, alternate over-the-counter medication as well as prescription medication are available in the formulary. That's one of the main concerns when you change carriers, is the disruption. But due to the fact of that large network, there's gonna be very little to no disruption, uh, in this change. Human Resources requests no change in the cost share of seventy-two twenty-eight. Upon approval of this request, we will design the plan with a keen focus on cost containment, new formulary options, surgical processes and approvals, health and wellness, and preventive, uh, care. The next one is comprehensive medical HMO, Kaiser Permanente. Kaiser Permanente has been the HMO, um, provided coverage for us for over thirty years. Market results indicate that Kaiser's bid for the HMO coverage was the only one received for this category. Kaiser bid for Plan Year Twenty-Twenty does represent a six-point-nine-five percent increase of current cost, which equ, which equates to $901,000 increase. It, to be fair to Kaiser, increase in cost for Kaiser over the last two years has fell well, well below the seven percent medical trend. Just wanted to put that out there for them. They, the last two renewals has definitely failed below the seven percent medical trend. There will be no changes in the current coverage level, and Human Resources is not requesting a change in the cost share model, seventy-two twenty-eight. Dental, uh, we're looking, we wanna retain Delta Dental. The cost for that is $1,675,000. Funding is available in the Twenty-Twenty budget, no additional cost to the county. Delta Dental has been the carrier of our dental coverage for five years. The plan is running well below, uh, budget. Currently, the plan offers a selection of a $1,500 option as well as a $2,000 option. An internal evaluation of the plans, uh, showed that there were not justification for the additional $500 in relation to the premium that the employees are paying. We are requesting to continue Delta Dental with changes. We are requesting discontinuation of the $1,500 coverage option. We're gonna maintain the $2,000 coverage option, and the good thing about that is the employees will get the $2,000 option at the $1,500 price. Uh, we also want to introduce a dental HMO. Uh, this is going to be a richer benefit with a smaller network, and it will offer lower premiums to the, uh, employees. Employees will not experience a rate increase. However, they will receive enhanced, uh, benefits as well as savings under this proposal. The Hartford, in regards to our income continuation of the short-term disability and long-term disability, STD and LTD, uh, the county does not contribute to this voluntary benefit. However, we do have a fiduciary responsibility to select the lowest-cost, uh, best benefits that are in the interest of our employees. The Hartford has worked with Clayton County for eleven years. We have received positive feedback from our employees in regards to their claim administration and timeliness. The Human Resources team have, has worked with Hartford, and we have no complaints in regards to the level of the administrative services that we receive. Uh, we have experienced no rate increase from Hartford for the last three years. The current coverage for short-term disability includes two options with three elimination, uh, options. The Hartford provides the tax-related administrative responsibility for the STD and LTD products. Human Resources is requesting to retain the Hartford as the carrier for our income continuation products. Employees will not experience a change in coverage, coverage levels or premiums. The Hartford Life Insurance Basic Life and Accident costs Clayton County contributes to the basic life voluntary benefit. However, Clayton County does not contribute to the supplemental coverage. The Hartford is the carrier for our life insurance products. The life insurance consists of basic life and supplemental A and D. Employees are given the option to increase their life products by $10,000 each opening enrollment with an increase in the, the option to increase spousal coverage, five hundred, uh, $5,000 up to the maximum amount. No changes are requested in the coverage amounts and/or conditions. Now, this is one that we're excited about, Vision IMED. Cost one thou, $1,675,000. Once again, funding is available in the Twenty-Twenty budget, no additional cost to the county. Human Resources is requesting the board's consideration to implement IMED as the carrier for our Vision product. Davis Vision is the current carrier, and we have received complaint regarding their limited network and services. IMED is quickly becoming the industry leader, leader as the provider of Vision insurance, over fifty-five million customers, um, different perks such as the Evergreen, um, discounts and so forth. IMED has a very robust network that will add value to the benefit mix. Added value include no rate changes, expanded network, and increased employee savings. Colonial voluntary benefit, the county does not contribute to this, to these voluntary benefits, but once again, HR in Clayton County has a fiduciary responsibility here as well. Colonial provide various voluntary coverage options for our employees. The voluntary coverage provided by Colonial plays a very important role in providing more options for our employees. Human Resources is requesting that we continue Colonial at the same, uh, as the carrier for our, uh, current voluntary products. One thing I want to add about Colonial is that, uh, last, uh, planned year, we were able to implement a group rate. We didn't have the group rate for Colonial before. Uh, we are in negotiations for the Employee Assistance Program. Once again, the proposed annual cost is $44,388. And EAP is a cost containment strategy for the medical, medical plan and is a valuable enhancement to the benefit mix. And EAP promote, promotes health and wellness in the workplace and is definitely can keep the medical claims from actually hitting, uh, the medical plan, which over time can result in lower cost. Also, Resolution ninety-one dash one oh three governs Clayton County Substance Abuse Policy, which provide alternative employment-related outcomes, uh, regarding violators of that policy. A robust EAP is needed to work in conjunction with Resolution ninety-one dash one oh three. Finally, zero, zero out-of-pocket. Clayton County Board of Commissioners approved a contract to implement zero out-of-pocket as a vendor for mat, for imaging services for our Twenty-Nineteen Plan Year. The contract provided a zero deductible for employees and also provided reduced cost for certain imaging services for Clayton County. This definitely was a win-win strategy. Data shows that we have saved over $31,000, $31,670 during the first year. Uh, Human Resources is requesting to retain zero out-of-pocket as a service provider as well as beefing up our marketing efforts to try to get more employees, make them aware of it, uh, and just to rack up additional savings. Lastly, flexible spending accounts, independent care amounts, uh, care accounts. Clayton County does not, uh, contribute to this voluntary plan either. Uh, in Human Resources, we are requesting to continue this particular benefit.
Oh, is that it?
Yes.
All right, is there a motion? I'll make the motions. There are second.
Second.
Any questions?
I just have one statement. When are we gonna finally get these benefits right? So, let me put this on the record. It's never been a secret. It's the reason why I ended up here. I do have a license and insurance. I've been there for thirteen years. And I get to travel and see everybody get these beautiful benefit booklets and all this stuff and all these benefits that are much lower than ours in our county. And, um, regardless of me being able to recuse myself so that no one has any questions about any improprieties, I will not leave this position until we get these benefits right. And for that reason, this is not what I thought was gonna be presented, Mr. Chairman. I know it was presented to us, uh, but I was told something else was gonna happen with us taking this six-month time period to enroll people in their benefits. We have a long way to go. Simple as that. And I, I, I didn't get a lot of the information I received, and I, I got it, but I didn't understand it. And I've been in this industry a long time, and the reference of Cobb and all of this, it, I didn't resonate, it didn't resonate with me. Because we have to make sure we do the right thing for our, for our employees, and all we've done is pass along an increase, and there are other ways to deal with it. We deal with a broker that brings us increase of an increase. I dealt with the group that it took some folks to come in and realize that they weren't getting presented everything that should have been presented to them.
There is an increase with this.
Six-point-nine percent is what I heard through Kaiser.
Commissioner, I want to, um, thank my HR team, Angela Jolly and Karen Bohannon, because they're both here. Uh, within this benefit package that we are providing, that we are proposing, Kaiser Permanente at a six-point-nine percent increase is the only increase. I stood here and I talked about the enhancements that is on the Delta Dental side. I stood here and I talked about IMED replacing Davis, uh, Vision in offering more to our employees. This proposal that we are offering offers more to our employees at a lower cost. Kaiser Permanente, six-point-nine percent, but as I said before, our employees liked options. I did not want to snatch that HMO because we did not get any more HMO competition. Now, out of due diligence, what we did do is we requested one of the carriers to quote us an HMO price. And that price was over twenty percent of what Kaiser is offering. There are so many facets when you are dealing with employee benefits, and I couldn't, I have continuously heard you say that we're getting it right. I think this proposal is a good step in the right direction. It is not the only step. I, we have other options that we are looking at, and we will continue the fight.
And let me say this, because I don't want y'all to walk away with saying that your staff, y'all aren't doing a good job. You are doing a good job, but I will tell you this, people are leaving over and over again because of the cost of benefits. So, you've done a great job on the supplemental benefits. You've done a good job. But we've got to come up, and we've got to hold our brokers' feet to the fire to give us more strategies. That's been my same thing I've said over and over again. It's not you. It's not you. You're working hard, but we need, we need more. Thank you so much.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Yes. Something baffles me somewhat, which is, you said we've had Kaiser for over thirty years?
Yes, sir, we have.
Did we put this out for bid, and how long have we had the broker?
Yes, sir, we did. Yes, sir, we did put Kaiser out to bid and as I stated, that was the only HMO product that we got quoted for. Because it's my understanding that carriers, they don't want to put a quote out there if they feel that they're gonna be underbid it. But what we did out of due diligence, and I will provide the name of the company to the Board of Commissioners, I don't want to put their names out there, but we did have them to quote us an HMO product and it was 20% more than what Kaiser had. I'll stand here and say, I'm not satisfied and I'm not happy with the 6.9%, but I don't, I know that a lot of our employees value that HMO product and that was one of the reasons that we didn't want to pull it.
The folk, go ahead, sir.
Is the broker actually facilitating these quotes?
Yes, sir, they are. They work in conjunction, that's a part of their scope of work due to the technicality of of medical RFP. The broker does facilitate the RFP process and I can say that we have this well documented. I'll be able to provide the board with the documentation of the other of the other bidders. But yes, we put it out there and I was disappointed, I really was, because I don't know if anyone from Kaiser is here or not, but I'm transparent in what I'm in my work and in what I do. No, I'm not satisfied with the 6.9%.
How long have we dealt with the same broker?
We have dealt with Epic. Epic is our current broker. Karen, how long have we been with Epic? James? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. For two years.
Any other questions? Here are none. Those in favor, I. I oppose.
Nay.
Nay. Two-two goes nowhere. Next.
Human Resources is presenting a proposal for the consideration regarding benefit administration of retiree medical coverage. Human Resources proposes to replace the current model of medical insurance for post-65-year-old retirees. The proposed model aligns with the fundamentals of a defined contribution plan through a multi-carrier exchange. Post-65 retirees will transition from the commercial health plan to a Medicare-based plan and would be given a monthly stipend from Clayton County. The stipend is $200 for retirees and $350 for retirees and spouses. Clayton County will continue to cover retirees dependents. Disabled retirees will also continue to be covered on the commercial plan. Initial cost to the county is $44,460 per year to expand MEDCOM's contract to include administering the HRAs for the stipends. We have calculated an approximate savings of $354,000. I did provide a spreadsheet to the board that reflects the total cost in comparison of this particular model with the current model that we have. Also provided a spreadsheet that provides just a general snapshot of future expenses over a five-year period. I've also provided to the board the plan, which include timelines and objectives if this particular model is adopted. As an alternative, if the model is not adopted, what I recommend is that we would take it back to market to get quotes on the commercial products. That's it.
All right, is there a motion? I'll make the motions, there a second?
Second.
Any other questions? Here are none, those in favor, I. I oppose. It's unanimous, next.
On behalf of the Sheriff Department, Human Resources is requesting approval for position changes as part of a restructure. Sheriff Department is requesting to delete the GCIC Terminal Agency Coordinator, Grade 20, Step 5. Total compensation, $60,027. We're also requesting to delete the Administrative Supervisor, Grade 17, Step 1, $50,607. We are requesting to delete the Chaplain, Grade 24, Step 5, $71,519. We're also requesting to delete Sheriff Services Clerk, Grade 12, Step 4, $45,450. We are requesting to add a Chief Clerical Supervisor, Grade 25, Step 1, $71,519. Also to add an Assistant Chief Clerical Supervisor, Grade 23, Step 1, $65,487. We're also requesting to add a Senior Chaplain, Grade 27, Step 1, $78,179. This request does result in a savings of $9,417.
Is there a motion?
Some.
Is there a second? Second. Probably moved and second, any questions? Here are none, those in favor, I.
Aye.
I oppose. It's unanimous.
And it appears that I have just one more. On behalf of Clerk of Majesty, of Superior and magistrate courts, Human Resources is requesting a request for position changes. We are requesting to delete one Superior Court Judiciary Supervisor, Grade 17, Step 4. We're at a total compensation of $51,388. We are requesting to add two Deputy Court Clerk seniors, total compensation each, $49,226. And the cost of this request is $47,114.
Is there a motion? Motion. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second it just for a question. Can't we put this in the budget process?
Ms. Wills, is this your request?
We're in the.
Come forward.
Hey. I don't want to say what would have happened, but I just have a question. Why aren't we addressing this during the budget process? I thought that each department had an opportunity to present and we're getting ready to look at the budget and it's right around the corner.
Yeah, so that's not a question for her, that's a question for myself from the CFO, I guess you could say. And one of the reasons, this was, you made this request when you came to your budget. It wasn't a requested item. So, that would be your question. It wasn't recommended or she did not make the request during the budget application process. My question to you is justification, what's the need?
Well, we are having an issue. We have lost over 22 employees just in court records within the last two years. About 95% or more have went on because they was, they have started working in the DA's office, the solicitor's office, or the judge's office making more money. The supervisors that we currently have in court records, they spend so much of time, majority of their time is spent because we are hiring, we are hiring all the time. As soon as we get employees hired, somebody else snatch them up. So, we are constantly going through this. So, we are trying to make it where hopefully we can get where some employees will stay whittlers longer by making tiers. So, that's the reason for this.
This is a position, it's not a tiered position.
Well, we had one supervisor, and I think maybe the way you have a word, it is incorrect.
Well, let me say, let me say this, Jackie.
Speaking of Mike, for me. Ms. Wills, if you would, step to the side and let her speak to the mic right quick.
In on the LR, we provided some backup information as to the strategic direction that Ms. Jackie wants to go in. Superior Court Records has a large staff and experienced high turnover. The court has lost several positions to internal transfers to other departments. The court has lost 31 employees since 2017. 22 of those employees were from this particular division. This request will create a new reporting structure within the Division of Superior Court Records in which these two Deputy Court Senior classifications will assist in the supervising of the, in training the 11 Deputy Court Clerks that work in that division. Did that capture it, Jackie?
Yes. It's a lot of time that is spent into when you're talking about training employees in our office. A lot of court time for being actually in a courtroom setting is a lot involved. It is a, it is, it's a stressful job for a lot of my employees because everything they do in court, when they do sentencing and all that, it affects somebody's life. We have to make sure that our records is correct. A lot of people cannot even do it. So, we got to try to find some other means or making our office where people want to stay. Because they go to other places, they do less to work and they make more money. We're at the bottom of the pole.
This is not one of the positions, obviously, that we looked at on the MAG study, correct?
The Deputy Court Clerks, they were impacted by the MAG study. I believe if I'm not mistaken, the current starting salary for them instead of Step 1 is Step 4, if I'm not mistaken. But they were, they were impacted by the MAG study.
So, did we bring them up to the minimum?
We did, we brought them up to the minimum.
Twenty-nine something. I think it's 29,918. So, for this position, Chairman, instead of Step 1, they start at Step 4 with the total comp of $51,388.
That is with the study.
Commissioner.
That is with the study, with the.
Yes, ma'am, that's with the study, Commissioner.
Now, the study was at 29?
That's total compensation.
What did we bring them up to? Yeah, the 51 is benefits and salary.
Yeah, the $51,388, that's with benefits and salary. See, without benefits and salary, it is the 29, is it 29,918, I think, 29,918.
When's the next time we're looking at Phase 2?
We're working on it.
We're working on it, yes, sir.
And Phase 2 is that additional compensation with that? It'll be up to the pleasure of the board, I'm sure.
It'll be at the pleasure of the board, but Phase 2 of a compensation study usually focuses on the decompression. We do have a decompression issue within our compensation study because at one point, the salaries throughout the county remained stagnant. This board has definitely worked hard to increase the compensation level, but at some point, the compensation was not moving. And then what we did is we continued to hire employees at that same compensation level that some of the veterans were making and that's what caused the decompression issue. So, Phase 2 of the study will be looking at addressing the decompression issue, that compression issue that we have.
Give me one more time the total impact, financial impact.
$47,114.
And where would this $47,000 come from?
Because the budget's complete.
Ms. Beavens, that's your question.
We would have to try to find another funding source and just try to find additional revenue in the, to accommodate that request.
Okay, now, the real deal is, where would it come from?
It can't come from fund balance because fund balance is for one-time use only.
Okay.
And that would be a recurring expenditure.
Did you look within your budget, see if there's anything you can squeeze out of that to increase that? All right, any other questions?
No, I just want to, I gotta make this statement. That's why I am so hard on these contracts that we have. Again, it's not personal, but because, excuse me, I'd had a conversation with Madam CFO and I just feel like we want to help everybody and I'm gonna be honest with you. I wish I could change the fact that we got employees making 29,918 and that's why I stay on the benefits because it all impacts the lifestyle of our employees and what they take home. It's never personal, okay? But at the end of the day, it's very difficult to decide to raise this salary up versus that salary up when we're looking at a budget and we're having to cut because we're not able to bring everybody up to where they need to be. And it's not saying that your folks don't have pressure or anything else, so does a lot of the others and I get it and I respect that, but we got a whole body of employees that we got to keep in mind. And that's it.
Any other questions, common statements? All right, those in favor, I. Oppose.
Nay.
It's denied, unanimously denied.
Chairman, if it pleases the board, I would like to make a comment before leaving the podium regarding the employee benefits. First off, we did our 2018 state interview and we got some good feedback on our benefits from the employee. We will be analyzing that information and providing a report to the board as to the things that are important to our employees. Secondly, I really thought as the HR Director, because this is my responsibility, that we provided a solid plan to the board. It may not, it's not a pencil for everything, but the benefits themselves, you're talking about a reduction, you're talking about offering the employees more than they currently have at reduced cost. The only increase that would be is for the ones who decide to keep Kaiser. And I already said, we did not want to take Kaiser, we did not want to yank that because some of our employees found a lot of value in that HMO product. So, I will be bringing the, I will be bringing the proposal back to the board for your consideration at the next board meeting. We don't want time to become an enemy as we prepare because if this is adopted, there's a lot of work that's gonna have to be done on the backside and I do not want time to be an issue for us, but I respectfully submit that comment and thank y'all so much.
And thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
The next item is Item F, which is Resolution 2019-71, a resolution providing for the adoption of the Clayton County Fiscal Year 2020 Budget.
Good evening, Board Chairman and Vice Chair Commissioners. I'm going to read the resolution and then I'm going to turn it over to the Chief Financial Officer. Resolution 2019-71 is a resolution providing for the adoption of the Clayton County Fiscal Year 2020 Budget to provide for the appropriation of expenditures and accounting for anticipated funding sources to provide for the circumstances in which the budget may be amended by the Board of Commissioners, the Chairman or the Chairman's designee to provide an effective date of this resolution for other purposes.
Ms. Beavens?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners. On May 14th, we presented the FY 2020 Budget, a proposed budget. Since that time, there were some changes, there have been some changes made due to a significant decrease in the tax digest, which resulted in a decrease in revenue as well as some additions of other expenses which are being brought forth as an amendment to the proposed budget. We're asking that the general fund be amended as follows. We're increasing lost revenue by $1,693,084. Increasing use of fund balance of $877,685 for one-time use for equipment and vehicles for the additional cleaning crews that we're adding for the three additional cleaning crews. We're decreasing the tax revenue by $6,448,884 due to the decrease in the digest. We're increasing revenue for the entrance premium for $238,427. We're increasing recording tax revenue for $70,934. Decreasing legal fees and the legal fee line item of $663,000. Decreasing expenses that money, rather, that we had set aside for the compensation study of $2,713,093. And increasing use of frozen positions of $534,608. That's all to address the decrease in the tax revenue as well as these additions that I'm getting ready to read on the expenditure side. The first one is a salary increase due to House Bill 31, which gives a 2% increase to the Superior Court Judge's state salary. That also impacts other elected officials. So, that total amount that we need to increase is $70,314. We're also requesting to transfer two Commercial Code Enforcement Officer 2s from the Police Department to Community Development. That is no impact because it's an in and out. We're adding two Aquatics Coordinators, one for senior services, one for Parks and Recreation. The amount is $51,882 for each position, that includes salary and benefits. We're adding a Custodian for Parks and Recreation, $34,608 salary and benefits. Two Accounting Specialists for the Tax Commissioner's Office to assist with increase in work due to the Tax Commissioner agreeing to assist with liens, well, not liens, but adding on Um, well, not liens, but adding on the tax bill, the, um, Norris abatement fees that are, that are, um, well, fines rather, that are assessed. And this will help with the quality of life. They're working with the Police Department. And he said that he could do that if he had some additional help. So we're giving them two additional accounting specialists. Their total amount is one hundred eight thousand two hundred sixty-one dollars. That's so, total salaries and benefits. Then the last item is an additional twenty-five thousand dollars for parks and recreation for, um, park improvements. The total amendment proposed for the FY twenty-twenty general fund budget is a decrease of three million five hundred sixty-eight thousand seven hundred fifty-four dollars. Um, and we request that we approve the general fund budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty in the amount of two hundred eighteen million six hundred ninety-three thousand two hundred and fourteen dollars. Then I have one more on special revenue funds for the fire department. We're adding tax revenue, um, to theirs for two hundred sixty thousand seven hundred twenty-one dollars. We're also decreasing the tax commission expense that they pay to the tax commissioner from, I think it's two point seven five percent to one point six percent. And that's a decrease of two hundred twenty-eight thousand seven hundred twenty-one dollars. And increasing their land and improvements line item four hundred eighty-nine thousand four hundred forty-two dollars. For a total, um, amendment of two hundred sixty thousand seven hundred twenty-one dollars. And we're asking you to adopt the fire fund budget, um, for FY twenty-twenty at twenty-six million seven hundred four thousand five hundred nineteen dollars. As you know, again, as I stated before, at the budget here, we have to adopt a total budget of all funds. So our total budget for all funds will be two hundred ninety-eight million three hundred sixty-three thousand three hundred fifty-three dollars. Which is a decrease of three million three hundred eight thousand thirty-three dollars from what was, um, proposed and presented at the May fourteenth meeting. And that breaks down to the general fund at two hundred eighteen million six hundred ninety-three thousand two hundred fourteen dollars. The special revenue funds, which includes the fire fund, is thirty-nine million fourteen thousand nine hundred thirty-six dollars. Capital projects fund is seven million dollars. Internet service fund, twenty-seven million seven hundred four thousand two hundred sixty-nine dollars. And the enterprise fund, three million eight hundred sixty-nine thousand twenty-seven dollars. This budget is based on maintaining the current gross mileage rate of twenty point eight one nine. Um, however, after we apply the loss credit of four point nine five eight, which decreased from three point five six from last year. The net mileage rate is fifteen point eight six one, which is actually an increase of the same amount of the decrease for the loss credit. The loss credit decreased mainly due to the loss of sales tax revenue because that is the, one of the factors in calculating that as, as low as the increase in the property values. So, um, uh, also I wanted to note that this is based on the, um, May thirty-first preliminary digest that we received from the Tax Assessor's Office. He has advised us that there should be minimal changes as we had a thousand less appeals this year than we did last year. That's all I have.
All right. Is there a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Commissioner Hamburg.
Not questions, but more comments. I was really hoping before receiving the information from the, uh, Tax Assessor's Office, that we could do something with the mileage rate. Since we are higher or high compared to, you know, the metro area. And, you know, at least, well, cause at least, I think last year we did, we had a rollback of half mil.
We decreased it, I think by a mil last year. We decreased the gross mileage rate. So we're not proposing to increase the gross. The only reason why there is even an increase to the net is because the sales tax credit, which is, we really can't control that.
Right. Well, I'm, I'm saying, I was hoping that we could.
Yeah.
Uh, have a rollback. Right, right. Well, yeah. We're saying the same thing. Uh, now, I do have a concern regarding our legal. Uh, I understand that we are going out, getting someone to come in and all. And I really like and think we have really done a good job with our, um, legal concerns. Legal representation and all throughout, not only the county, the state and the country. You know, because we do have a company, a firm, that is nationally known and probably internationally also. And I really would like for us to stay with this plan. I mean, I, we've had on-the-job training attorneys for some time since I've been a part of this board and all. And I, I just have found that in the last so many years that we have really had very competent. Not that we didn't have that somewhat in the past because we were training people, but we have folk that are already professionals and all. And I really like the services that we are getting and all. And like I say, you know, to me, uh, within the county, we are real represented and respected. Because of this, um, service that we're getting and all. And another thing is that we have a new commissioner. And if we could, you know, at least give him a chance to, I guess, experience what we've experienced and make a, more of a well-informed decision on this. Then, you know, I would be very pleased and all too. But, uh, anyway, I, I just wish we were keeping, uh, doing our due diligence, as everyone likes to say, in this matter. So we can continue with the, um, professional services that we have received.
And Commissioner, I can't respond to that.
I can though.
I'm gonna defer to the chairman to respond to that.
Chuck put you up to that, right? All right, so, I'm playing, I'm playing, I'm playing. It was my recommendation that we go back to a, a in-house attorney. Uh, they, Freeman Matt Scarry has done excellent job for us. There's no, uh, denying that. But however, I feel like we can benefit better by having an in-house, uh, staff attorney. We had one for several years. We only went to this current model for the last two years, I think it was. Uh, so again, I think it not only benefits us from having somebody, and they've always been accessible, so I'm not saying that that's not the, that's the case. But somebody who is concentrating solely on making sure that they take care of the commissioner's interests, uh, on a day-to-day level. Uh, Commissioner Davis, he might be new to this board, but he's been in this county for a long time. So he knows the politics and the good work that, you know, this law firm has done. So I feel com- com- confident that he is, uh, well-aware of the legal services.
And I have no doubt about the ability to litigate at all, but I do concur with Mr. Chairman. That looking at the best practices for what I've seen, it's best to have somebody on staff that, uh, represents the interest of the county. And then also to, um, really diminish our levels of any type of, um, how do you say this right? Duplication of representation throughout the various boards. That work? Okay.
All right, any other questions, comments?
I just have one quick one. Does that include?
Oh, I got one.
That position that was taken away in December?
Mr. Hodges, I got a question for you, sir.
Yes. Cause, yeah.
Ms. Hodges, uh, about six months ago, it was last December, you gave up this custodian position. And I asked you at that time, are you sure? Can you do it without it? You said absolutely no, yes, I can do without it. Six months later, what has changed for you to request it now again?
We, we got additional facilities, the Rivers Edge, uh, building. We've got two new recreation centers coming on board.
But they won't be on board till next year though.
And that's money.
Well, that's, is it a budget? This is the twenty budget, if I'm not mistaken. Is this the twenty budget? FY twenty budget?
Madam CFO, isn't each one of those new facilities already have staffing in the budget? Doesn't they have, don't they have staffing in the budget or no?
We included funding in the budget, um, for the operations of those buildings.
You did include it.
The ones that are opening, yes ma'am.
Okay.
We've included some in there for that.
Okay.
For the months that they'll be open during the fiscal year.
And how much is that position? And we already included that in the budget? You found money for that one?
Uh, we did find some money for this one.
And how much is it?
It's, um, the salary is twenty-two thousand dollars, twenty-two thousand forty-nine dollars. The total cost including benefits is thirty-four thousand six hundred eight dollars. That's included in the amendment.
So we do have twenty-two in the budget. Twenty, but you already put that in there?
That was budgeted. Uh, another commissioner requested.
Yeah, this was another request.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a recommendation that we amend the budget to eliminate the twenty-two and give that to Ms. Wells. Can we go back to that? Give a half until we can figure it out?
That wouldn't be enough for her though.
But it would get her started at least until we can get it resolved. She's saying yes, sir.
Commissioner.
I got one vote.
Hold on.
Going back to that one, I was actually gonna recommend that we revisit her request at mid-year when we've collected, um, additional tax revenues. To see if we can fully fund that position for her. We should be in a better position at that time to do that if she's amenable to that.
She said should be, but we'll take a look at it mid-year to see if we're able to. So, my only question was, uh, would that change for you to request this? Cause I was very specific about do you need it? And you said no, so, but I'm not gonna prolong the hour, so, thank you, sir.
My amendment still stands for.
Did you make a motion?
Uh, oh. I did make a motion for an amendment. I did. I did. I'm making a motion for an amendment for the twenty-two thousand to be, uh, reduced from the budget. And I still would like to vote on moving the twenty-two thousand over to our, um, clerk.
Okay, so we got an amendment to move twenty-two thousand.
Excuse me, the, the total amount is thirty-four thousand six hundred eight dollars, including benefits.
No, it's benefits.
Benefits was fifty-one.
So we need, I mean, she wants to make amendment. We need to take the amendment before we make the original motion.
That's correct.
Yes.
And I would like a vote.
Is there a second on it? Is there a second? Here are none, the motion fails. Go back to the original motion. Uh, we have first and a second. Those in favor, I.
The twenty-two?
No, it's in there. That was her motion to approve the budget. Uh, not your motion. Don't, don't make the face, don't make the face. Not your, but, who made the motion? I'm confused. Now, I made the motion.
You made the motion and Commissioner Davis seconded it.
All right, now we on track. All right. Those in favor, I.
I.
Opposed?
Nay.
Uh, three wanted passes.
Thank you.
Who was the one, was that?
Uh, Commissioner Hamburg.
The next items G, H, and I are public hearings. And on May seventh, twenty nineteen, the Board of Commissioners approved time limits on public hearings. Citizens may speak for or against an item that is considered by law to be a zoning decision. And each side will have ten minutes to present its case. In the event there is more than one speaker per side, speakers must divide their time in order to complete their full presentation within the ten minute, minute time allotment. When the time runs out, the speaker will be expected to immediately cease speaking and to leave the podium. Applicants or citizens speaking in favor of an item shall seek, speak first. Applicants in zoning ordinance cases shall have the right to reserve time for rebuttal. Opponents for a zoning decision shall have no right of rebuttal. When speaking, speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name, address, and name of your organization you represent. Abusive, profane, or derogatory language will not be permitted. Holding up signs, clapping, or yelling to show support for your opposition to, your opposition to a speaker will not be permitted. But a show of hands or quietly standing will be permitted to show support for or in opposition to a speaker's position. The first one is Trade Your Tires LLC Balla Facility Solid Waste Handling Permit.
And this is only for a, a public hearing only. So with that being said, is there anybody who would like to come up and speak for this request? I mean, this, uh, yeah, for this, uh, permit request? Anybody like to speak for it? Anybody like to speak against it? Yes, did I hear somebody?
Somebody over to the left.
This is for the tire, yeah. Anybody like to speak against it?
Uh, excuse me, where's this facility gonna relocate?
Madam, the location of it? No, sir. We're gonna provide information.
I guess I know the most about this request. It's on State Route fifty-four. It's an existing, uh, tire sorting facility. The company has applied to EPD for a additional permit, which is a bailing function. Um, it's not a function that the county permits. Uh, we really, our responsibility per EPD is to hold a public hearing for comments. But it's an existing tire recycling sorting facility in current operation. They're just seeking a different permit from EPD.
Okay, so nothing new really.
Correct.
All right, anybody wanna speak for this request?
For it?
If you wanna speak against it, come on. You want for or against?
Mickey Garber, Unincorporated Rex, Georgia. It seems to me, you know, if we don't, don't know where, exactly where this location is. What I'm trying to say, is this in a commercial area? Is it in a heavy industrial area? Is it in a individual home area? That's all I'm trying to find out to give a proper response to his request.
Yo, he, Mr. Matarco goes, ask you a question, but you do understand it's already an existing business where it's at?
Is it existing in a commercial area?
I believe it's in light industrial right now. Yeah, it's, it's already zoned correctly. It's, it's, the address is for the record. Seventy-four sixty-eight Jonesboro Road. It's on State Route fifty-four, a little south of Battle Creek.
Little south of Battle Creek, so that is a heavy commercial area.
Mm-hmm.
Yes? Yeah, yes?
It's industrial.
Industry.
Light industry.
Well, let me tell you, if it's in the proper area, I'm all for it.
Thank you, sir.
I'm done.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, here and now, we'll close the public, uh, hearing on this, on this matter. Madam clerk next.
The next item is MOD nineteen zero one dash zero zero two to modify existing conditions. Did you want me to read that? Madeline, are you gonna do it?
I'll, I'll, I'll read the conditions recommended by staff and planning and the ZAG group.
Yeah. Who's the, where's the applicant for this request?
I'll, I'll proceed with the recommendations. Is that's okay first?
Yes, go ahead. Why, Mr. Bray is calling.
What we have before you today is a fifty-one lot subdivision referred to as the Garner, Garner's Ridge subdivision. That was approved during May twenty-seventeen and later, uh, planted and recorded. The, uh, fifty-one lots has, has six existing conditions. And I'll, I'll briefly go through these conditions for you. The recommendation for today is to modify two of those conditions. The first, the first condition, as it stands, is that the property should be developed under RS one eighty. With fifty percent of the homes being a minimum of twenty-two hundred square feet. Forty-five percent of the homes being a minimum of twenty-five hundred square feet. And five percent of the homes being a minimum of three thousand square feet. Condition number two, this was conditioned to four-sided full brick structures. The request is to modify this condition number two to read as front facade to have a minimum of thirty percent brick, stone, and stucco. Or fiber cement material to be of Craftsman style construction. And, and it shall provide a three-foot high brick masonry water table along the side facades of the structure. Consistent with the masonry materials on the front of the facade. There will be a landscape vegetative buffer along New Hope Road. The modification also seeks to delete the requirement for side entry garages on all suitable lots. Condition number five, there will be underground utilities, sidewalks, streetlights, and sided yards. Condition number six, there will be restricted covenants per con- per conservation zoning requiring a mandatory homeowners association. The staff and ZAG recommendation is for approval.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Bray? And before you, before, before you start, do you wanna reserve any minutes for rebuttal?
Uh, yes, I will.
How many?
I try to anyway.
How many?
Uh, let's just say two.
Okay, proceed on, sir.
Cause we, I'm gonna have Mr. Hughes, um, address also at the same time I am. I'm here actually doing, I, I heard your budget restraints you're under. I'm here to help you increase your budget.
That's not good, Mr. Bray. That's not good.
That's from a previous chair talking.
I got you.
As you know, this subdivision is, uh, has been zoned for some time. Uh, the only thing we're asking to do in behalf of the folks who are trying to build on this. Uh, the only thing we're asking to do in behalf of the folks who are trying to build on this site is to modify the all-brick, to reduce that to where he can build a craftsman home. We have a quality builder coming in, he's building in the county now, uh, over on Fitzgerald Road. So, they've built all over the Atlanta area and they build real quality, trying to build here in this county. But the all-brick just doesn't work for their, uh, model. And he, Mr. Hughes is here, who's in the construction business and has his renderings, and I'd like for him to show you those. And we'll meet all the criteria established by the county, except for the all-brick. It'll have the brick, whatever that is, that goes all the way around, y'all call it three-foot. It'll have brick masonry, all the product will be masonry products on these home. Same thing he does in Buckhead, be built right here. Just little small houses, except for the square foot you require. Mr. Hughes is here with dressing.
Good afternoon, Brad Hughes, Rock Haven Homes. And, uh, as Mr. Bray said, the only, uh, request that we're, uh, asking, we're in agreeance with the rest of them. Uh, they're already on the existing final plat, but is this to remove the four-sided brick requirement? This was developed, thinking back in two thousand and six and seven, the final plat, it's been on the, you know, just sitting there for the last twelve years. And every other builders looked at it and passed on it, just because of the cost. Uh, you know, right now that it is to, you know, build a four-sided brick home and sell it. Uh, that cost, that extra cost in the brick is, you know, prohibiting us from, you know, making the deal move forward. So if we can remove that, uh, one zoning condition, then, uh, we'll move forward. And, uh, you know, start building out the subdivisions and stuff. But would, uh, request, uh, respectfully request y'all's, um, approval. And, uh, amend that, uh, four-sided brick requirement.
Okay, uh-
And I'll save the rest of the rebuttal.
Okay, anybody wanna speak for, in favor of this? For, for this development, anybody wanna speak for the development? Okay, here and none. Anybody wanna speak in opposition? All right, uh, let's start up here.
Good evening, my name is Hans Hamm, I live at one-one-one-six-nine New Hope Road, directly across from the proposed subdivision. I appreciate the opportunity to address each and every one of you this evening. I come to you not as a developer, not as a builder, not as a lawyer, but a citizen of this county and a citizen of the neighborhood of New Hope. And our concern is over the quality of the proposed go-forward that the builder's talking about. Does the developer have the right to develop land? Of course he does. The builder has the right to build on the land, but what we have a dispute with is just the quality. Within a three to four mile radius of where this is, in the Panhandle place, a three-brick-sized home with five bedrooms, three baths, two twenty-two hundred square feet is listed at two-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand dollars. Panhandle Valley's got almost the same at two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand. Flannery has one at two-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand. Waterpoint just sold one at three-hundred-and-forty-three thousand. In the last six months, uh, there has been sold for three-hundred-and-forty thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty thousand. So what they're gonna tell you is they gotta scale it down, because that won't sell in this area. It's showing that right now the homes have already sold at that kind of quality. If you draw an imaginary line from McDonough Road, the Flint River to nineteen forty-one, so you take that Panhandle area, and you look at the homes in there, most of them are of acreage or larger lot sizes. Uh, they're a higher quality of area, and you're gonna be hard-pressed to find that same quality anywhere else in, in Clayton County. I mean, it's just a different quality of home. What we're really asking you to do is stay with the neighborhood, stay with the citizens who want a better quality. That's what we're all wanting for this county. If we don't wanna continue the, the status quo of just building anything. They build up in Buckhead, why can't they build that same quality of home here for us? That's what we're asking for, is just consider the quality. If they take half of it down and only put a third up, you're reducing the quality of your homes in the whole area. That's our concern and our real, uh, beef with the whole project. I appreciate the opportunity to address you, I hope you have a good evening and God bless you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, come on up, in the pink.
Good evening, I'm Jenny Gwen, I live at one-one-five-five-six New Hope Road. My family's lived on New Hope Road for forty-two years. We have a combined total of four homes and twenty-six acres on this road. We have a business in Clayton County for thirty-three years, we are vested in this community. And we are also concerned about the quality of homes, I've researched this company, they do build beautiful things in Buckhead. What I have seen in Clayton County that they are working on is just, it's just not the caliber that we want on our road. And to go along with, um, Mr. Hamm's comment, yes, there have been several homes. And just in the last few months, seven homes have sold for more than three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in our area. And five of those were on the market for less than fifteen days. So, don't tell me we don't have a need for higher-quality homes, for people to want to stay in Clayton County. Some people leave jobs in Clayton County, maybe it's because they're living in another county. So, you know, we need those homes here to keep people, to encourage people to come back. When the neighborhood was first being developed, we were told it would be thirty-one houses at the first meeting that we had. Um, full-brick and side-entry garages, which I noticed they didn't bring up again. And at some point, it was ref, um, rezoned without our knowledge to fifty-one homes. So we already feel like we've been duped at some point with that rezoning, when things were not transparent. And we don't want to bend on this current proposal, because we've already bent on the number of homes packed into a small area. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Yes, sir. I'll get you next, sir, come, come on up and have a seat up front, go ahead, go ahead, sir. Sir, go ahead, you have the mic, go ahead.
I got the mic, so I can go ahead.
Yes, sir, we'll get you, get, get you next.
You know, this has been a long time coming. I haven't had the chance to speak to you since we worked the polls together.
That's a long time.
Years ago. You kept all those people from beating me up that wanted to vote without registering. And I appreciate that. Anyway, I'm here because, uh, about forty-something years ago-
State your name, please.
My name's Coy Whittington, I live on New Hope Road in Clayton County, right across the road from where they're trying to build this, uh, this beautiful, stuccoed vinyl siding buildings.
Oh, no vinyl's allowed in the county, sir.
Over forty years ago, my wife and I bought some land there and built a home that we're gonna live in the rest of our life. It is brick. And for forty-something years, my neighbors and I have been working diligently to keep the Panhandle section of Clayton County beautiful. It's been a struggle. Now we've got all kinda high-density housing coming in. This property was zoned for four-sided brick. What's the point in changing it? This is the second or third time we fought this battle. If the builder can't build a four-sided brick house in there and make money on it, let him go someplace else. That's my opinion. I don't think the people that live there should be asked a lower of their standards, just so some builder can make more money on a house. I thank you for listening to me. I wanna, I wanna compliment Jeff Turner. Jeff Turner is one of the very few men that I've met in my lifetime that is an elected official that will not compromise his morals or his integrity for personal gain. If I did not believe that, I would not be here tonight, and he would not be my friend. Thank you very much.
Unsolicited, it's unsolicited. Just let y'all know, just let y'all know, unsolicited. Come on, sir. You just come on.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is John E. Brown. I'm a resident of Clayton County, I'm also a resident of Magnolia Plantation. I, like my fellow residents of Magnolia Plantation and of the New Hope community, oppose any further relaxation of the requirements of the Garner Ridge properties. The requirements have already been relaxed, and we feel that they should not have been. We chose our homes in this area for a reason. We do not want to be in an area where the houses are built practically one on top of the other, or where the inferior or substandard material are used. If that is what is required, or that is what is desired, there are other counties available for that. There are several, I won't bother to name them, but there are other counties. We chose these homes for the relaxed atmosphere we have created. We chose our homes for the value they represent. Introducing homes of lesser value would decrease the value of our homes, and we therefore ask you to deny any requests that would contribute to the devaluation of our homes. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Yes, sir, come on up quickly, you got about a minute thirty seconds left. You can just take the podium, sir.
Good evening, I'm Joe Roach, I live at nine-twenty-seven Magnolia Way, Hampton, Georgia, three-zero-two-two-eight. And Mr. Turner and I did meet a few years ago, many years ago now, really, you probably don't remember me, but I remember you. You came to our subdivision to, uh, inform us how to have a neighborhood watch in our subdivision. You did a good job, you've did a good job ever since then.
Thank you.
I'd like to, a little background on what's happened here. When we built our house in that Magnolia Way subdivision, which is one block down from this one, there was a restriction south of, uh, Mora, not Mora, Terra Road, one-acre lots, a minimum. And we went to several zoning commissions, people trying to get that changed, and it didn't get changed. And then somebody threatened to sue the county because of it, cause they were doing it in other places. Anyway, a builder came in and bought, I guess, this property, and he went around to all the neighbors, the homeowners association and everybody, what can I, you know, let's get together on what I can build that you won't object to my petition to get less than one-acre lots.
Your time is up, but if you can summarize in ten seconds, I'll let you summarize. You only had ten, only have ten minutes complete.
The original petition here was nothing but to change, to add hardy board to the building materials. But they didn't put any limit on it, it could be all hardy board.
Okay.
Anyway, and now we're talking about a whole lot of other stuff besides what that petition was. I'm a little confused about that.
Thank you, sir.
But my time's up?
Yes, sir, thank you. Uh, that's it for the opposition, the ten minutes has expired. Mr. Hughes and Mr. Bray, are you gonna come back for rebuttal? There's five minutes nineteen seconds left, should you wanna exercise those.
First of all, let me, let me address, quality, you know, sometimes, all-brick doesn't make a top-quality house. There's a lot of things, and, um, American Craftsman home is one of the, is one of the top-notch quality homes being built in America right today. It's an opportunity now, if, for us to bring a quality builder here to build quality homes. And the quality goes inside as well as out. No, there won't be any vinyl, in spite of what might be said, cause that's a gift law anyway in Clayton County. There'll be no stucco, it's brick and stone on most of these houses, all in the front, as to, as I see, heard the recommendation to sew on the sides, and then the skirt around the backs. You're talking about two thousand, twenty-five hundred square feet, and three thousand square feet, which is good for this area. It'll make a quality home, cause these folks with quality in these, in the subdivisions, everyone they built, they have not built in Clayton yet, they have a subdivision underway, they just hadn't got a house out of the ground yet. So, anybody that may seen their house in Clayton County has not seen it yet. They got a development on Fitzgerald that y'all have approved. I think, I understand that just today, they've gotten a pumping station in, and so that'll come out of the ground real soon. This is an opportunity, and I know I, I don't wanna be facetious, but it is adding to the tax base. That property doesn't need to sit there, and I don't believe anybody will ever develop it, and that may be good that these folks want to see it, just stay like it is. It's in the ground, the streets are in, it's ready to be built on. But I don't believe anybody will ever build, the numbers will never work for an all-brick house. And plus, it gives a, it's sort of a stymied thing, when you've got all these houses, how many ever there were? And they're all brick, there's no variance there. I just don't believe he's, people like that, they like the American-style Craftsman homes. And I, I hope that y'all consider that and approve this thing. Anything else, I may have thirty seconds left.
These are some revised elevations, it shows more brick and stone, um, on the front, for some reason.
They look different than here?
Yeah.
You might wanna put them on the floor.
But what Mr. Bray was saying too, the not having an all-brick, um, home, you have a much more, um, you know, attractive and colorful, uh, elevation scheme that you can do without the subdivision. And, uh, you know, that's one of the reasons here, and again, you know, Magnolia Plantation, those lots are a hundred and fifty feet wide. I think there's only about two other subdivisions that have lots that wide. Gardner's Ridge, again, is a developed, final-planted subdivision, there's seventy-foot-wide lots, which is, you know, ninety, ninety percent of all the subdivisions, um, down here. And, um, you know, a lot of the lots that were in the Panhandle were gobbled up during the recession for, you know, ten, fifteen, you know, thousand dollars, and those lots just don't exist anymore. And that's the, you know, their justification, uh, of being able to do it now. So we just had a different time than we were, you know, three, four years ago, five years ago, when they bought those lots. So again, um, you know, we're excited to be here, and, uh, you know, to get going, and hopefully y'all, uh, approve this, uh, request. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board, from Mr. Hughes or Bray?
I just wanna say, um, I respect everybody's position. And one of the reasons that I did request for Metro Study to come, and I believe the group, and y'all just forgot about it, I spent time with y'all, y'all only see chairman a day, that's all right. But I did spend some time with the residents, and I'm gonna say this, one of the reasons that I did go get educated is because I do wanna dis, we do wanna dispel the myth of, uh, certain homes won't sell in Clayton County. And also, for the record, I walked away from a home that sold for three-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars in the Panhandle because of, I don't, and I talked to the folks, I didn't want any, um, any appearance of any type of, um, complex of interest. So I say that to say, I put it on record that I do agree with you. And I agree with the fact that in the Panhandle area, the average home sale is still right around the two-hundred-and-eighty thousand, upwards of to the three-hundred-and-something thousand. So where I do respect Rock Haven Homes coming in and wanting to bring a quality home, I do have to say that I differ with what's being built in Buckhead and what's being presented today. What's on the screen is not what's being presented on that board, I agree with that. But when you're talking about doing only thirty percent of it, brick is not what I see being built up in the Buckhead area for Rock Haven. And even when I just pulled up the website, it's distinctively different of what's being built there and what's being built on the South Side. It's two different products. So I respectfully will decline the recommendation of the board at this time.
Is there a second? I'm sucking the motion, any other questions? Those in favor of I.
Aye.
Opposed, this unanimous. Next.
That means it stays the same, y'all.
The next item is CUP nineteen oh two, zero zero nineteen, to allow for an industrial warehouse.
Hold, hold on a second, Madam Clerk, let's, let someone clear out first.
Um, you know, before, before we go to the next, uh, person. Yeah, before we go to the next, um, earlier there was a discussion about zoning and how we were not getting it right, and all, let me make a comment. Our zoning administrator, Wright, um, sent something to each commissioner for their district, and we were to go over that-
And we were to go over that and approve, or disapprove, whatever it is that we either want or do not want. And at that time, because over a course of some months, some accusations have been made to this board that Commissioner Gregory and I were not, I guess, fulfilling or going along with the zoning and all, or we were going in the opposite direction, that is not true. I covered District Two, she covered District One, I believe Commissioner Davis did Four, and Commissioner Franklin Warner did Three. So we all had a chance to say what we either want in our district or we do not want. So to put it on our administrator or the community development director is very incorrect. And I don't think we should have done that, or we should do that, or whatever, because that information was given to us for us to make those decisions about our individual districts.
I'm so glad that came up, because I do have emails that show, and also show the fact that what was presented was not at all, in a lot of cases, what was even looked at. I've spoken to everybody in this room, including Ms. Hussey and everybody. We've had one-on-one conversations about the fact that we did entertain the ability to be able to make utilization of land and open land. However, when it comes to the mistakes that were made and things that were done, I was baffled myself, because there were signs that went out, information that went out, that didn't go out, and I've got it documented. So it's not saying that I'm putting something on the Community Development Division. No, and Chairman, as my witness knows, I called him when I first sensed something was going awry, as well as Mr. COO. But I am only one commissioner, I only have one vote. So I'm gonna put it on record, I don't know what games are being played, but I tell you this, my God is greater than anything. So you could put anything you want to say out there about me and my name, but my name is the only thing I have to stand by, and my actions are documented. And if people made mistakes, they need to stand up to the mistakes and fix it. And you all are right, it don't take six months to fix something that was done wrong. I don't know how it was done wrong. I never included any of that, your farm or anything. I've talked to you all, we looked at Victoria Meadows to see how we can make it work. But that's what we are elected to do. And if we can't make it work, at the end of the day, I'm gonna make the decision that's in my heart. I never backed away from any of that. I meet with both sides, so I'm glad you put that on record.
All right, let's move on. Mr. Fenther. Is this your, are you the applicant for this? Oh, wait a minute, okay, Ms. Span.
Yes. We have for you, before you today, a request for a CUP by applicant Transwestern Development Company, on behalf of Gulf Coast Press Stress Partners, represented by Mr. Harold Bush, is requesting a conditional use permit for HI, in the HI zoning district, to allow an industrial warehouse. The subject property is located at fourteen twelve Battle Creek Road, Jonesboro, Georgia. Otherwise, with the parcel ID numbers that are identified, the subject property is twenty-three acres of land. We have before you today a recommendation from, from the planning staff and the zoning advisor group, a recommendation for approval with eight itemized conditions, and I will address the conditions for you. The first condition is to limit the use of the property to a three thousand fifty-one, three hundred and fifty-one thousand square foot warehouse building, as depicted on the site plan, submitted. The proposed number of driveways and their locations along both Battle Creek Road and South Lake Parkway are subject to the approval of the Transportation and Development Department. The, the rear loading, the original request was to request rear loading to minimize the impact from the street, however, this development backs up to a single-family subdivision, so the loading would occur in the front in order to minimize any impact to the rear. So the condition is to allow the loading dock to remain as shown on the site plan. To provide an eight-foot sidewalk along the right-of-way of Battle Creek Road and South, South Lake Parkway, this sidewalk shall be designed consistent with the requirements of the Transportation and Development Department. Provide a landscape buffer along the road frontage to provide screening of the parking and storage area, subject to the requirements of the arborist. Tree specimens shall be a mixture of pyrrhous or pear species, and shall be located within the rear buffer area. Again, this is the recommendation of the county arborist. The tree plantings may also follow the completion of the DOT frontage improvements. Provided, the six conditions is to provide a fifty-foot undisturbed buffer with additional plantings to achieve dense plantings with hundred percent solid screening along the north property line where it joined the residential property to the rear. Prior to site development permits, there are two parcels involved, these parcels shall be combined into one parcel. Condition number eight addresses improvements recommended along the Battle Creek Road park, Battle Creek Road frontage and the South Lake Parkway frontage. Staff will note that the frontage of, of Battle Creek is a, is a Georgia DOT-approved project, and the designs for that project are already in place, and the site plan as shown reflects the improvements suggested by, approved by GDOT. The recommendations from staff was, is recommending that they include a transportation drop-off lane and a bus shelter along that Battle Creek frontage. However, it needs to be consistent with the DOT improvements, but the applicant will address that level of compliance. Those are the eight conditions recommended by the zoning advisor group and, and planning staff. The applicant will address where they stand with these conditions.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Span. Minutes would you like reserved for rebuttal?
Couple minutes, please.
All right.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, it's a pleasure to be with you and the other commissioners again, here tonight. I'm here tonight representing Transwestern Development.
Did you state your name?
You already said it twice.
Yeah, I know, but you need to say it, I might be wrong.
My name is Steve Fenther, the local attorney. My client here tonight, Steve Cross and Greg Bowler, they're gonna make the presentation tonight. One quick point on item number three, she's read it differently than we got it this afternoon, are you good with that?
Good, good evening. We are very excited to be here. I'm happy to say that at the suggestion of Commissioner Davis, we had extensive public outreach for this project. And although, at, at first, we, a lot of the, the neighboring residents were not in favor of, of the project. Once they understood the, the full situation in our plan, we feel we, we were able to garner quite a bit of, of support from the residents. The, the issue at hand here is that our, our parcel of land is zoned heavy industrial, and it is directly adjacent to a residential community, and those two zoning, as I'm sure the commissioners understand, are, are very incompatible with one another. Heavy industrial is meant to, to really attract noisy, you know, in some cases smelly, in, in, in all cases, pretty much, very intense uses. What we proposed, and what we were able to, to gain the right for, is a light industrial use that is able to really isolate all the activity away from the residents. In fact, the, the condition three was very important to us in terms of gaining the support of the, of the residents, because we are really proposing to have our building act as a privacy barrier and sound barrier for those residents. So that, as you can see here, this is a great, a great site plan to show. Our entire back wall, that is, that abuts the forty families there to the, to the north, or the, the top of the page, is really gonna preserve their quality of life. In fact, at one of our outreach meetings, one of the, one of the residents who lived there said that while the concrete facility was operational, living there was hell, you know. He, and, and we really felt, felt for him. You know, we, we faced with the idea that we, we know that there are other users looking at this parcels, there's truck terminals, there's another concrete factory looking at this. Should our plan not be, be approved, the citizens really, really recognize that in terms of making our use compatible with those residents, this was really ideal. So with that, we're, we're happy to report that our belief is that we have substantial community support for this project. Thank you.
Can you give me your name, please?
My name is Steve Cross.
Thank you.
All right, anybody here want to speak? Uh, Mr. Fenther?
We had some substantial discussions with the residents in the last thirty minutes, because we thought that the, this project was, this development's gonna be flipped, so that the trucks were coming from, on the backside, next to them. Can you make it clear to them that that's not what's being recommended now?
From the backside to the frontside?
The recommendations that were emailed out this afternoon wanted us to park next to the residents. As I understand it, they're, they're recommending that we go back to this site plan where the, where the trucks are on the other side from the residents.
And that's not what y'all had agreed to?
No, no, that, it's, it's the original site.
Go ahead and clarify that up.
It's the original plat, as the, as we discussed with the, with the neighborhood and the residents.
Okay.
Anybody like to speak for, in favor of this, please come forward, sir.
I've been on your side many times, working for the government, working for the Development Authority. You know, South Lake Parkway, most of the property I used to own, from nineteen eighties. And at that time, Charlie Griswold and other commissioners wanted to make it as a windy hill of Clayton County. And what, and Macon, Macon Priest's concrete used to be a sore thumb all the time. I developed those apartments, I did some of the office buildings, and we did the water authority, some of the land. But Macon's priestess concrete was always a bad lo, you know, thing to see every day. And I, you know, Steve came to me to do a warehouse next to Lowe's. I own a piece of property next to Lowe's on one thirty-eight. I told him no, I told him because these are the apartments, I don't want to do here. But then he mentioned, I'm not, I'm not involved in this, but I think this is a better location, and it's easy access to seventy-five, without going through neighborhoods. So I would think that, I would request that you have a positive response, because this is a good use of the property. Or if you don't, you're going to have a concrete company. You rather have that, or you'd rather have a warehouse which is good-looking. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak in favor, please come forward.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, I know the timer is wrong, so how, how much time do you show? We'll give him two more minutes here. Come on, sir, please. Right.
Hello, County Commission, my name is Anthony Pinkins, I'm at fourteen fifty-three Arbor Place, which is the subdivision, I guess that's in question here. I just want to make sure, I think I saw on item three, has the plan changed?
They, they have agreed to our initial plan.
If it's okay, I can take time to clarify that for the board and for the audience, if you would, if you'd like. The, the planning commission recommendation, the staff recommendation that's presented, recommended that the rear, that the loading occur to the rear of the building. That's pretty much a standard that we've been moving towards, just to minimize impact along the road frontages. However, in this case, where the backload is next to the residence, it makes sense to observe the site plan presented by the applicant, where the loading is to the front of the property, and all the activity would be to the front, and therefore the buffer and the building wall to the building would act as a buffer to the Arbor Place subdivision. So condition number three has been, is being deleted. Therefore, instead of being eight conditions, there are seven conditions in, in order that the site plan here will be reflected in the development plans.
Answer your question.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else want to speak for this development? Mr. Garber, this is for.
Mickey Garber, Unincorporated Rex, Georgia. I am in District Number One. This is in District Number Four. However, I've said before, whatever happens in total of Clayton County ultimately affects all of us. With that being said, knowing that this area is zoned heavy industrial, and knowing that other elected officials made housing, individual housing, next to heavy industrial and commercial, knowing that was wrong.
I'm sorry, but your time is up, your time is up.
I will, I will summarize.
Make it quick, two seconds.
I will summarize, given what I know, I accept that building being built there for myself and the people of Clayton County.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Fenther. Now wait a minute, no, 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 opposition, anybody here for opposition?
No, I'm standing back.
Anybody in opposition? Seeing no one, Mr. Fenther.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a minor point, our site plan shows the building at three hundred and fifty-three, not three hundred and fifty-one. If we could make that change.
That's, that's noted, sir. I'll make sure we reflect that in the conditions.
My name's Greg Bowler, Vice President with the Transwestern Development. I just want to say, this experience going through the conditional use process has been one of the most rewarding experiences, I would say, for the most part, mainly because we went into a lot of these meetings, and the first thing you hear is, we don't want no warehousing. But after actually hearing the benefits and the trade-off and all the information, and actually hearing from the private side, and not necessarily just totally ignoring it, they were open-earred, realized that it was a benefit to them and to their community, and everybody was able to come together as a private-public partnership. So I just want to commend leadership here, specifically Commissioner Davis, for taking that lead and making sure that we reached out to the residents however often we needed to, so.
Well, thank you for that comment, and at the end of the day, people can be reasonable if you're transparent in your actions. So I appreciate y'all taking the time to talk to those citizens about the project. Mr. Davis?
Well, first of all, I'm gonna take a hundred percent and apologize to you all for that number three, that was totally on me. I apologize for that. But one thing I can say is, we did reach out, and I can take the time to say, we need to change something on notification of residents. When we have these developments wanting to go up, this, what is it, two hundred feet, three hundred feet, that entire subdivision was not notified. And we put signs out to notify them. We also called, and I put it out on my site, to get a lot of the other county residents involved, Mr. Garber, as well as some others, who I know don't want warehouses in this area. But looking at the plat from years ago and seeing warehouses that were approved, I believe, as early as nineteen sixty-three on up, and the earliest residents being approved, I believe, in nineteen eighty-six to the most recent, two thousand and four. This area, we have to basically say, who are we? And we've got to define ourselves. And that is a warehousing area. And from what I was speaking about, I think there was even a trucker in that subdivision who says it's safer to make, was it right-hand turns, whatever. So it's gonna, there's a safety issue as well that we have to look out, and I think it's a, in benefit of the county. So I move that we approve this as read.
Is there a second?
Second.
With conditions, yes.
It's modified.
Well, with the, with seven conditions?
Yes, seven.
Seven conditions and the modification of the square footage of the building, three hundred and fifty-three thousand square feet.
All right, any other questions? Here and those in favor, I.
Aye.
Oppose, this unanimous, next.
Next item is J, which is a rezoning nineteen oh three dash zero, zero, eighteen, and Justina Uweedy. She told me Uweedy, Justina Uweedy.
This is a request for rezoning for, from property from general business to mixed use. The applicant proposes a mixed-use development with, with three thousand two hundred square feet of commercial, and six units of residential condominiums above the commercial space at the bottom. The subject parcel is located at eight fifty-five Highway one thirty-eight. The subject property consists of zero point four acres of land, and has a hundred feet of frontage along Highway one thirty-eight. Staff and the zoning advisor group recommendations are for approval. The conditions are, as recommended are, are as I will read. Limit the number of upper floors to no more than six residential condominium units, ownership units, of five hundred and seventy, seventy-six square feet per unit. The ground floor commercial space is to be limited to personal services, professional office space, art display studios, fruit markets, health clubs, and spas, florists, medical clinics, bookstores, and walk-in cafes. Provide an eight-foot sidewalk to be provided adjacent to Highway one thirty-eight. Architectural design... Architectural design of the building and development, and development site design must meet the Highway one thirty-eight overlay district. And any deviations are subject to review by the, the, the County Board of Zoning Appeals. And the applicant must comply with Clayton County tree ordinance requirements for tree protection. These are five recommended conditions from the planning staff and zoning advisory group.
Okay, this is not a public hearing, for a public hearing, but I will allow the applicant to make a statement if she so chooses to do so.
Good evening.
How y'all doing? It's past our bedtime.
Pretty much.
So I did go over all the conditions last time I was here.
State your name for the record.
My name is Justina Uweedy. I'm working on behalf of Ramtech for eight five five Highway one thirty-eight. So I did take care of all the conditions the last time I was here. And then I was supposed to meet with Ms. Hambrick on the property, and she brought along a family there, and we went over the property and what we were doing. And we were happy about the situation. I did have one suggestion. As we went on the property and we were looking around at the landscaping, if we take it back, I think it was two thousand sixteen or two thousand, yeah, about two thousand sixteen, the Highway one thirty-eight proposition on you guys' website was to have this, you know, beautiful retail at the bottom, condominiums on top. But there was a lot of problems with the landscaping as I was looking around, and I contacted Tyler, and he said, well, it all depends, 'cause some property, the landscaping is owned by the property owner, or maybe the state, or maybe Department of Transportation. And I was just gonna suggest that maybe if you had somebody that was in charge of all of that, because it gets kinda complicated with the project manager. 'Cause I'll give you an example. I was in Smyrna, dropped my son off at a babysitter, and I drove by, and they had a new development, and I was just like, wow, it's amazing. I'm never in Smyrna, but I wanna just go there because it was just so nice, and it's a wow factor. And I just wanna bring the same thing to Highway one thirty-eight. The problem is, is that, you know, we don't own all the properties. We just own that one. And as he was saying, some of these things are Department of Transportation, the state, and this and that. And that, that would get real confusing, but at the same time, we want the landscaping to look nice with nice lights and nice flowers and, you know, nice decorations. So when people are driving down Highway one thirty-eight, they're gonna wanna stop. They're gonna wanna shop, and they're gonna wanna spend money, and they feel safe, and they feel comfortable.
All right, whose, whose district is this? Ms. Hambrick?
Yes.
It's on you.
Yes, I recommend approval with the conditions, and if you would read those conditions again, please.
The conditions are to limit the, limit the number of upper floors to no more than six residential condominium units at a minimum of five hundred and seventy-six square feet per unit. The ground floor commercial spaces to be limited to personal service uses, professional office spaces, art display studios, fruit markets, health clubs, and spas, florists, medical clinics, bookstores, and walk-in cafes. They must provide an eight-foot sidewalk along the Highway one thirty-eight road frontage. Architectural design of the building and development design must meet the Highway one thirty-eight overlay district standards unless there is deviations are approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals, and it must comply with the Clayton County tree ordinance requirements for tree preservation. Those are five recommended conditions by staff and the zoning advisory group.
All right, the motion is to approve. I'll second the motion. Any other questions? Here and now, those in favor, aye. Aye, opposed. It's unanimous.
Thank you very much. Have a blessed day.
Well, you got another request, right? Or was that both of them? Second one is for, no, it's the same thing, Dr. Brennan.
But real quick, your, what, your comment is not only well-taken, but it's called a BID, which is Business Improvement District? And that will help solve that. That's something you can look into a little bit later with dealing with state highways. We tried to get one on Terra Boulevard some time ago, going into the corridor. We're gonna try it again. Maybe your area, too.
All right, so I'll, I'll be on.
Mr. Metarkel.
On, on that one thirty-eight corridor, who would be responsible for that, what do you call those lanes? The turning lane? Yeah, that's right. That's what I thought.
Well, I would just express that it would be easier if it was one person in charge of, instead of calling so many places, 'cause it can get crazy. And, you know, we want the place to look nice, you know.
That's what a CID and a BID allows you to be able to do.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, that's all, except the rest are appointments.
All right, first appointment is to the ZAG Board to fill the unexpired term of Casey Watts on the zoning advisory board. Term will expire on August nineteenth, twenty twenty. Miss Watt?
Even if I don't jump in, I don't get it in.
I guess.
I do wanna, I don't know how to do it, but we need to put Mr. Herschel Traywick, who we put on the other board. I would like for him to serve on this board, the ZAG Board. Do we have to officially remove him first?
Does he?
Yes. That's the board. Originally, he wanted to be on. Herschel Traywick.
So what board is he sitting on?
Appeals board.
Is he tendering his resignation? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, he did.
I haven't received it yet.
Okay.
So just make sure he, he, what you call it, tenders it. Is that your recommendation?
That is my recommendation.
All right, is there a second? I'll second the motion. Those in favor, aye. I will create a question.
Okay, question. So now, I, I would think that the resignation should be prior to, dated prior to our putting him on this board.
He can be on both boards, technically.
He could, but I mean, if you just want him on one board.
Yes, ma'am. Well, I would just make the recommendation for Mr. Herschel Traywick. Thank you for that.
Yeah, but he, he will have to, well, if he wants to resign the other board, I would pretty much, to her point, to the commissioner's point. So it's truly not any kind of conflict on what he's voting on to just resign from the other, if that's his plan.
He submitted it prior to.
Yes, he submitted it in writing, actually.
And Chairman, to add to that, I believe we have a lot of talented folks in this community, and we be, we be, need to begin to limit the number of boards that folks can resign on.
And I agree with that. And I'm probably gonna try to push some legislation to that end.
Yes.
Those in favor, aye. Opposed. It's unanimous.
Well, speaking to that, they did that some years ago, and they kicked me off of the board. But they had to, they had to go back because everybody had to resign. They, they tried that once.
All right, next appointment is the Library Board to replace Charmaine Golly. The term begins on July thirtieth, twenty nineteen, expires on June thirty, thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. I believe she had a conflict, and she's not able to serve on that board. Is there any recommendations?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I recommend Ms. Brenda Pritchard of the Pandental Area to serve on that board.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Any questions? Here and now, those in favor, aye. Opposed. It's unanimous. Next appointment is to the DBHDD Board to fill the term, I don't even say, oh, Brenda Roberts' term, which expires on April, expired on April second, twenty nineteen. And I'll see when the next term is. She's not able to serve because she's served two terms already. Madam Clerk, what's the ending? I guess four years, April twentieth, twenty twenty-three?
I don't know exactly, but I believe they serve four years.
Yeah.
All right, let's just bring this one back, 'cause I, I, we need to be sure as, as far as the expiration date on it. All right. So we'll hold that till next meeting. Mr. Ree.
Chairman, I believe the legislative request shows, at least the, the attachment to your thing on, on Appointment M is a three-year term for the behavior development.
You talking about in the back of the book?
Yes.
Do, does anybody have an appointment for this board?
It's, it has, according to the notice that was provided, it says created by House Bill one hundred Act five five two, adopted in January nineteen ninety-four, approved by the state, five-member board, three-year terms. Her term expired April second, twenty nineteen.
Right, they, they came in April, and no appointment was made.
So if, if the board desires to appoint someone, then they would, their term would expire April second, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, so does any board member have a recommendation, nomination for this position? Madam Clerk, hold it for next meeting.
And I believe we only have one executive session on personnel.
Personnel.
And that's it.
All right, so.
Can we add legal?
Yeah. Legal and personnel.
Litigation and personnel.
Litigation. It's litigation, right? And personnel. Motion going to executive session for litigation.
Motion.
First mail. I'll second the motion. Those in favor, aye. Opposed. It's unanimous. Thank you. Let's have a seat. All right, motion to reconvene.
Motion.
I'll second the motion. Those in favor, aye. Opposed. It's unanimous. Ms. Sambles.
Chairman and Commissioners, Human Resources is making a request of, on behalf of court administration. We are requesting a step increase for Ms., well, we're step for one of the law clerk seniors. The total comp is grade twenty-seven, step three, fifty-eight thousand one oh two. Total compensation, seventy-eight thousand four hundred and ninety-eight. The proposed compensation, grade twenty-seven, step fourteen, sixty-six thousand six hundred and ten dollars. Total comp, eighty-eight, eight fifty-six. That is a total cost of ten thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
All right, is that motion? I'll make the motions. There a second? Second. Any questions? The only statement I'm gonna have is that this puts her in line with the rest, and she's coming, a new, a new hire, and she's come with the experience and knowledge. Any other questions, statements? Here and now, those in favor, aye. Aye, opposed. It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous.